Call the
Thank you, Evan.
Order. Welcome everyone. Okay, first is public comments. Do you have any public comments? Hearing none. We'll move to review of the minutes for the meeting of September 12th. Entertainer motion to accept those minutes.
I think the motion to accept the minutes as second.
Any discussion? Okay, will you say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
I'm staying.
You aren't here?
I was on here.
Okay, minutes passed. Excellent. And now I'd like to welcome Mike Gilbert from the MASC. All right, Mike?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, my understanding is we're talking about policy. Yes, that's my favorite subject.
For ninety more days.
Yeah, for ninety more days.
Are you retired?
Why are you out?
I am retired.
Wow.
Congratulations.
Retired in December, chasing grandkids around in the summer winters in Florida.
I'm not sure if they're gonna survive without you.
Who will, as a rep for our school then?
Dorothy Presser. Dorothy is a twenty-year member of the Litfield School Committee, has been working for us for the last few years, especially around the area of district governance. She's going to take most of my territory. We're also hiring a former member of the Carlisle, uh, Cambridge School Committee, takes some of the southern end of my territory and Eastern Mass. Jim Hardy will still be around covering Southeastern Mass and Tricia Nowick and Liz LaFawn covering the western part of the state. And as far as I can tell, Glen isn't going anywhere until soon either. So, I think a couple of you, Christine and Mary, may be familiar with the process that we utilize because I know that Concord Carlisle and Concord have gone through that process with us and have their policy manuals online with us as well. So, here's what we generally do. We take your existing policies, policy manual. We take our reference manual, which has about four hundred to five hundred sort of best practice sample policies, and we sort of meld the two together. And then we come back out to you and work with you, doing a couple of sections at a time. Section, the codification system is an alpha system and it is coded A, sections are coded A through L. We generally try to do two sections at a meeting with a subcommittee of the school committee and administration. So, it generally takes about seven or eight meetings to get through the manual. There are two sections that we do sort of individually because there's a lot of meat to those. That's section I, which is instruction, and section J, which is students. So, what we do is we will sit with you and we'll go through policy by policy. Where the policies are exactly the same, you know, we sort of leave it alone. Where there are differences, we look at each policy, what's practice, what's legal. And, you know, you may have to change practice if the practice is not in line with law. Otherwise, if, as long as what's there is legal and you want to continue to do that, we'll give you a policy. We do all of the edits. And where there are holes in your policy manual, we will fill those holes in with our sample policies. And so, there may be pieces that you need to adopt. We'll talk at the time that we begin the process about how you want to, as a committee, adopt the manual. Some committees choose to let the subcommittee work all the way through the manual and simply adopt the final product. Others want to do a couple of sections at a time as we do the edits, bring them back, and the committee adopt those sections. And then again, at the end, you have, ultimately, at the end, you will always put up your hand to adopt the final product. What we deliver in, as part of our policy review process, is a paper copy of your entire manual and an electronic copy in Word with each section in a Word file. That way, the reason we still deliver the paper copies is your policy manual is a permanent public record and must be kept, one copy must be kept on paper. So, we do that. And then we also have the online hosting service, which we would then take the final Word documents, convert them into a database, and host them online for you. We use a third-party service that does this across the country with other states as well. They have servers in two different states. So, if something were to happen to your computers here, your policy manual is still safe somewhere else. It is easily Word-in-phase searchable. So, anytime you want to find a policy, you can either search by the code or you can search by, if you have certain words that connote that policy or that are in that policy, you can find the policy very easily. Also, all of the cross-references and legal references are linked. Especially with the legal references, as long as the law is online, you click on the link to the statute and the statute pops up and you can actually read the statute. In Massachusetts, almost all of our statutes and regulations are available online, so they're all linked. Some of the federal statutes are a little bit more difficult and we have some that we aren't able to have online. So, the cost of this process, the policy review process, the cost is $10,500. We will spread that over up to three fiscal years. It does not take three years to get through the process. But we understand that budget constraints exist and we're happy to work with you on that part of it to spread the cost over up to three fiscal years. The online hosting service, the first year cost is $3,500. That includes the cost of conversion, hosting, and unlimited updates. So, anytime you make a policy change, you simply send us the policy change and we load it up onto your policy manual. Generally, when we load a full manual, it takes forty-five to sixty days to load the manual, but individual changes generally are definitely twenty-four hours. The second and subsequent years of the online service, $950 a year for hosting and unlimited updates.
So, that's on top of the ten-five, the thirty-five hundred.
So, it's really fourteen thousand. So, it's really, it's two contracts. One is ten-five for the manual review and then thirty-five hundred for the first year of hosting and $950 a year thereafter.
Do we pay anything or rate to be members of the Mass Association of School Committees?
You do.
So, this is on top of that fee?
Yes. Our policy, our policy service and our search services, we charge fees for. They do not cover our costs. But given the cost of doing this type of work, they are reasonable and we're not, again, we're a nonprofit, so we're not making, not really making wrong money off of this.
Are you aware of our current process for policies?
Not particularly.
So, asking you then, what's wrong with it?
So, maybe phrase it, what are the advantages of doing this?
So, the people who do this for MASC have a long history of doing this work. All of our policies have been legally reviewed by our legal counsel. Our legal counsel has worked for MASC and been a school lawyer for more than forty years. He's also our legislative counsel. He has a very solid relationship with both the legislature and the attorneys at DESE. So, when we have an issue related to policy, Steve is a person who will, he reviews our policies and he works with attorneys and state departments and in the legislature to ensure that what we're doing from a policy perspective is aligned with not only the language of law but also the intent of laws.
Is, are he available to review policies that we, that are proposed?
In, Steve does occasionally represent the school committees. So, he would, he would, I don't know that he would do that now. I know in the past he has done that. Certainly, you can ask us to review a policy and we'll look at it and if we have legal questions, we would go to Steve.
Is that only available with this online policy service or is that available as a member?
I think that would be available to you as a member. Certainly, as long as I'm still working for the association.
For another six months.
Ninety days.
Ninety days. I would continue to do that. But I expect our Litfield directors would do that as well. I would also say to you that, you know, we also work with state departments often. I'll give you an example. We recently put out a policy on crowdfunding related to employee issues and crowdfunding rates. Because of the issues with the conflict of interest law, we worked very closely with the general counsel to the State Ethics Commission to ensure that the language of our policy was in compliance with the conflict of interest law. Having that kind of relationship is not something, you know, every school committee can't pick up the phone and call the general counsel of the ethics commission. We have that, we have that ability.
Do we get that benefit of policy visibility and access as members or only with policy service?
We get that as members. So, anytime we make a policy change, we send that to all our members. We send it to the district, we send it to each individual member as well. We electronically put it out on our list serve and we post our policy newsletters in our policy updates on our website.
So, it's, is it in this characterization to say that the policy service is a hosting service and where we, where we are absent of policy, we'll insert them?
Yeah.
Well, I think, but my understanding from what Mike said, it's more than that.
Yeah, I mean, we review your existing, we review your existing policies.
It's a full review of that policy.
At the same time.
So, I, from personal experience, Mike's very helpful if we have a specific question with Nancy and I used, Manuel used to use to bounce something off and he's pretty responsive and I don't know behind the scenes whether you check with somebody else if you need to, but I assume you do if you're unsure.
One thing I learned very early as a school committee member is don't ask a question you don't already know the answer to.
No, but I do ask questions. I don't have the answer to you.
And if I don't know the answer, I will go and get the answer.
So, I mean, that, that level of service, we do take advantage of it presently.
But that's, as I understand it, as long as it is your replacement in sixty, ninety days does the same thing, will still be available to us whether we use those as a service or not?
I assume the level of experience by MASC, so yes, that's my guess.
So, really, the add-on service is just hosting?
No, well, no, I think what I was trying to say is that, so on a point, on a, on a specific policy question, and we'll have one right after this, then Mike can weigh in on it. MASC has been a great resource to get that, like, to go and say, oh, please, review these forty policies and give me feedback. I mean, I, so I think it's, it's an oversimplification to say, certainly, the online hosting is definitely part of it. But I think at least what I heard is particularly.
If you asked me to review your entire policy, you'd say four years, I'd say, I would say no.
But if we asked you one at a time over five years, you might.
We haven't had patience.
But if you, yeah, and I would tell you what's funny. Oftentimes, we do get questions when we're doing presentations like this and talking to school committees about the service. Well, we feel like we could do this ourselves. And you probably could, but I guarantee you it would take you longer. And most of the time when I, when people say to us, you know, we're gonna start to do this ourselves, usually about a year to eighteen months in, I get a phone call back. Help, come help us out.
One of my earlier questions was if you're aware of our process, our policy, our process on policy. I think it works quite well. What we do is every meeting, review two, three, four policies such that they're all on a rotating basis and every few years, we touch each of them. This way, we're not inundated with too much work in one month and too much discussion. We can give each its due consideration.
And I think that's commendable. First of all, not all committees do that. I've worked with committees that handed me a book that said nineteen sixty-four on it and I had not, you know, the dust was still there. And then, I think, anytime we do work with a school committee, we will always recommend that a policy subcommittee continue to follow the process that we use with them, which is taking a couple of sections and reviewing those couple of sections, you know, every six to eight weeks. So that over, basically, over a two- to three-year period, you review your, you do review your entire manual. I think five years is actually a little long, but.
I don't think it's quite five years, correct?
You also strive for three.
We strive, try, I may not get it, but.
And I think too, in a K to six district, that your policy manual is probably not as thick as some others.
K eight.
Or K eight even, because a lot of, a lot of policies relate more to high school or full K to twelve districts. So, you know, from that perspective too, it's a little bit easier.
Which leads to a question, Mike. If one is on this service, are you, and as I, as you described it, so we would pick and choose between the standard MASC policies and our policy or the hybrid. So, we would have a bespoke set of policies. What's the review cycle that one engages with? Is it still then again up to us to continue our process of reviewing every few years and going back? That's honest, right?
And when we, when we send policy newsletters out, you know, that should be a tickler to you as well to say, you know, to, MASC's made some changes to policy, they've issued some new policies, we need to, we need to stay familiar with those.
It's a justice, but we can do that now.
Yeah, you can do that now.
So, then, you know, the policies you described in here that it makes reference to the Mass General Law where appropriate and also you guys are keeping tabs on policy-related issues. The hosting fee that we would be paying would be simply just to host it and it wouldn't include any modifications to the policy based on?
So, if, once you vote the policy change as a committee, we would never make a policy change without your permission. So, we, we might send out a new, for example, we just sent out two new policies related to the Elementary and Secondary Schools Act, ESSA, related to military families, children of military families and, I think of the other one was, yeah, one was military. But anyway, one of the ones was children of military families. So, we built a new policy based on the federal guidelines. We sent that out, we put with it, put a code on it, sent it out. We don't load that into all of the manuals that are online. We wait for you to say, yep, we're gonna accept that policy, or we've made these changes and this is the policy we accept.
So, that's kind of my question. If there's a change in Mass General Law that's relevant to our policies or this type of change that you're describing, you would then reach out to us and say that we need to be aware of that and review?
Correct.
He reaches out to us anyway. Anytime there's been a policy change at the state or federal level, then we can match that up against our own stuff.
So, could one simply sign up for the online piece of the service and pay to have our policies uploaded?
So, we have two prerequisites to the online service. It has to be coded in the NEPIN encoding system, the National Education Policy Network system, that alpha code system. And your policies have to be available to us in Microsoft Word.
So, we would have, if we didn't want to.
If you did, ten thousand.
Right. We'd have to do that work. We'd have, well, they're inward already, so.
So, I would just say, you know, you'd have to provide me with an index file in Word and a set of policies for each section.
And then they would be linked to the?
And then we would, then we would load that up on Word.
And that linkage to the MGL will be on that?
Yep.
Do you have an estimate for the storage size required with a monthly or annual bandwidth used for hosting a school's policies?
I don't, I don't have a clue.
It's Word, it shouldn't be.
Yeah, I, well, we take the Word files and convert them into a database. We don't actually do that work with the party that does it. They have servers in Virginia and Connecticut, I'm sorry, Virginia, Texas. And they also do this for a number of other states across the country. And they're not a nonprofit, are they? They are not.
No, it's ten-five.
They don't get the ten-five.
Nine fifty a year, yeah.
They don't get all of the nine fifty, we get a portion of that, but they get a significant portion of that. So, they, and they continually, continually update the platform that the database sits on. So, that there are, for example, we asked them a couple of years ago to add links to each policy. They've done that. We had a little issue with them with the links. They, the links were based on a numeric check in the code that if you changed one of the policies, you added a policy, it renumbered the links. So, that, you know, if you're using the link on another website, that would break the link. So, we asked them to fix that so that we could make sure that it was available for districts to do that. They've done that. They're working on, right now, they're working on a new version that will include the required accessibility guidelines for websites and will allow Google Translate and Microsoft Translates to pick up the policies directly. Right now, you have to pull them out and run them through the translator, but they'll do the translation directly. And they're enhancing the ability of a website to be accessible from all the types of mobile devices. So, instead of just having a laptop, you buy your phone, you can bring your policies up and they'll be easily accessible. They're accessible now, but right now it's easily accessible.
So, when you say it's accessible, is it accessible to password-protective people or can any member of our community access it?
Any member of your community can access it.
And they, do they need a code or does that mean if I live in another town, they can look at the Carlisle policy?
We actually put, we actually put all of the policy manual links on our website. So, if you go to our online manual page on our website, there are close to seventy-five districts policy manuals available on our website.
So, anybody could look.
Anybody can look at them, they're public documents, so, you know, there's no reason not to. And we even have the ability to search all of our manuals at once.
Do you know if they are served in proprietary Microsoft format or in a universal format?
They are, they are preserved in a universal format, not Microsoft. My phone is software developed.
Mike, if we were to sign on, do we ever, is there a specific individual who would be assigned like to us in terms of marching through the policies?
So, yes, the field director who comes to the area would, would work with you. So, in that case, it would be Dorothy Presser when we come out and work with you. If you chose to do the online piece, we'll provide you with information about the person in our office who takes the updates. And generally, it's the admin assistant who would be sending those into the office.
Dorothy, you have a lot of policy experience?
Yes.
Okay, that's very interesting. Any more questions?
It looks like it's a, you have actually a package deal with this policy twenty-one that includes the policies as well as you incorporate handbooks. It's a system-wide handbook for principals, teachers, and students, master contracts. So, this would be kind of a package.
So, when we, when we do the full policy review, we ask you for copies of your student handbooks, your collective bargaining agreements and contracts. So, if there's any policy language in those, we'll extract them and make sure that they end up in your policy manual. Or, and that the language.
With reference, links to it.
That the language is in the policy manual matches with the handbook. Because student handbooks are generally updated on an annual basis and may actually be more up-to-date from a legal perspective than your policy manual.
So, they don't actually host them together?
No, we don't host them.
But you're doing the comparison to make sure that they're not.
That's right, when we do the full policy.
Would you create links to relevant sections of the handbook or other documents that we have?
No, but you could certainly, in your handbook, link to specific policies because the links are very easily pulled off of the online manual and easily edited into your student handbook.
Principals do that now.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike. Can you stay, stay there? As an example of a policy, we have, the next item is reviewing the residency policy. And we'll all have a copy, Mike, perhaps, from there. And this has been a critical issue for us because, you know, we certainly want to provide the best educational product we can to the residents and other eligible people in town, but we do need to ensure that the families or the people responsible for the students meet certain standards of residency. We've kind of gone back and around. So, I know I have some questions. Why don't we start with Josh or anybody over here that has questions with the policy as it's in?
Yes, Mike?
Do you want the background? Sure, go ahead.
As the policy used to be, we had an issue with four nights.
With what?
Sorry, four nights.
Not four nights again.
And the advantage of having a policy is it makes things clear. It makes it clear to all that decisions are not arbitrary and whimsical and that there are clear guidelines for it. On the other hand, four nights was a little too rigid. It didn't fit all cases. Here we have what seems to be quite a bit of discretion and judgment can be applied to decide whether a student qualifies as a resident. I think that's good. Is it the right balance of rigid rule that establishes clear expectation and makes it clear to all that this is not an arbitrary decision with meeting our students' needs? And that's my question and concern about this proposed policy, is it doesn't strike the right balance.
So, I would say, I think it addresses the four-night issue, which was the key issue. But just to make it more interesting, so the MASC policy, they don't have a residence. You have an admissions policy, correct?
Is it the same?
And just for interest, I'm gonna hand out a copy of that. Although I apologize because when I printed off three words in the right margin, it didn't print off.
Some guessing, Mark, then.
So, actually, if you give both of those to Josh, because what I also did, Concord takes advantage of the MASC services. So, you can see those are few. So, you can see the MASC template and then Concord's residence admissions policy is after that. Cindy, would you like to see?
Yeah, thanks.
I don't have enough copies. So, just, I know sometimes brevity is what you're looking for. This just gives you an idea of what the MASC.
Is the MASC policy or the Concord policy?
First page is MASC with just two paragraphs.
Which, which MASC policy are you using?
School admissions. Is that the right correspondence? So, just, so they are really open-ended and, and I guess I.
So just, so they are really open-ended and, and I guess I, Dave, you, you, no, Nancy spoke to Mike earlier about the actual rulings at the, at the state level. It's in two nights, three nights, four, it's all.
Goes back and forth.
If, if there's a parrot in their hair, some part of the.
What, 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 do they sleep in?
So there, so I think the policy that we have in the packet is what our attorney looked at, he added a few things that made it seem a little more specific, but we did factor out the four nights. So it is more open-ended to address the concern. But now we have a couple of options before us, how we might want to.
Yeah, these are so brief.
What's the one on the right?
That's Concord.
So Concord tailored the.
They tailored the MASC policy, but it's just a sample, the MASC policy is very.
Brief.
Brief, yes. And that seems to be the sense that I got from our policy meetings in the past, that less is more.
Well, it seems to me, just to jump back to the earlier topic, that the MASC template policies should be fairly broad because they are prepared for the purpose of amendment.
I think that's, that's a fair statement. I would say in general, our philosophy has consistently been that policy as a governance tool, as a guideline for administration, and it's what needs to happen and why, and that the details of how, when, and where are procedure and belong to administration.
And we try, we do, I would say, with Josh's guidance, we try very hard to keep policies at that level. Steer away from mechanics obligations, but. And so anyway, I can see where, if we were in that service, the MASC person would take the broad policy here, compare with our very detailed and help us, to your point, either move the mechanical things over into the administration or otherwise tailor it. Concord did to meet a specific situation. So part of, yeah, part of using the residency policy as an example is helping us understand how MASC might help us if we were using the service. But in front of us today is a policy that, to Jim's point, has certain specific situations which I think you and counsel pretend are mostly, most of the situations we can expect to.
Yes. And a lot of it echoes the originals, just in a different format, but it addresses all of our concerns, it addresses the four nights, and I think we should live with this.
But there is that other approach we can take. So Jim, do you feel that this policy protects us from any potential allegations in the future that a decision was arbitrary?
I do.
I, I agree with that, and I think also, you're always, for something that could become contentious, like whether the child is a resident of the public office in another town, I think we're best served if we have a policy.
That's my point.
And we're not, we're not arbitrary in our decision, we point to it now, it can be challenged and may wind its way through litigation to force a change of policy, but at least we start with consistency. So from that perspective, I am in favor of approving a policy. We're here to discuss, we're not going to vote today, we're here to discuss whether we want to make additional, this has been around a few times, if we want to make additional changes to the policy.
So you're not in favor of brief ones?
I am not, and the only reason is that.
It's a, it's a boilerplate.
Well, no, not that it's a boilerplate, it's more that it leaves, it's silent on a lot of issues that do arise. This one sort of comes out of hard experience, that, of real situations, and one has to make a determination. And it's better, in my opinion, than to have a clear reference, so that's that.
I just thought that was interesting, since they had to take a look at it.
So I would say to you too, that there are a couple of things that I would, you know, not looking at the need of this, but just looking at the format of it, that I would recommend you do a little differently. One, I don't ever like to quote statutes in the body of the policy. The statutes change all the time. So where it says pursuant to MGL seventy-six-five, you know, I would change that to pursuant to Mass General Laws and then put a legal reference at the bottom to the actual statute. Then if the law changes, you really don't have to change the legal reference and it's not impacting the body of the policy. The other piece is, we do a lot of cross-referencing, so I noticed in a quick read on the second page, you have a bullet point, it says students who follow the Canadian Veto Act, you know, a paragraph there about that. So we have that, we have a whole policy on the Canadian Veto Act, so we simply cross-referenced to that policy.
So that, yeah, so that's right, an example of where a small, small district like Gowers might not actually line the whole policy on the.
Well, you actually have to have one on the Canadian Veto Act. So, you know, cross, doing the cross-reference, I think helps in that you have that policy that complies with the law on homeless students. And without having, without putting language around that in your admissions policy, you would not have the potential opportunity to put language in your admissions policy that might be in conflict with what the law says about homeless students. So I think it's just something to think about as part of your process.
Okay, that's cool. Other questions or comments on the policy? I have, I have two questions on the, on the grid. One is on the one, two, three, fourth paragraph down on the first page. The principals will verify, et cetera, et cetera, and then further down, if a determination is made that student does not actually reside, the student's enrollment will be terminated immediately, et cetera. And it says you can appeal to the superintendent, but aren't there other avenues for an individual who feels that the superintendent has reached an unfair conclusion?
Well, in this case, certainly the family would have the right to come to the body to ask for a waiver of policy.
Body being this body?
Yes. And they always have the option of taking legal action if they feel it's unfair.
Does that need to be spelled out or is that?
No, I don't think so.
Related to that proposal, change to this. We decide, imagine the scenario, we decide, student really doesn't live here, out of the building right now. Get out of here.
I was surprised that it brought this.
And then parents say, hang on a minute here, with this more information we want to present you. Do we want to build in a process for that that makes sense, such as, you know?
A buffer.
Either a buffer or they agree if the finding is not in their favor, that they agree to reimburse the cost of intermediate time as part of, as part of their appeal, some way that we can.
I think there should be a review, a review, a review somewhere, like I hear you.
So a good lawyer would say to you that the words "a reasonable time" might be more apropos than immediately. And legally, a reasonable time, most courts would say, is fourteen days.
I think that's better if you think about the actual child.
Yeah, no, I, I, I struck that whole, but we may want to think about.
Yeah, but saying that determination has been made, the student doesn't actually reside in Carlisle. At, by that point, the determination is already made.
What it says is that the principal has to verify and if they can, well, you should speak.
So I'm just curious, so Mike, isn't, in the MASC policy, it's very brief, right? Doesn't get into any of those aspects.
So that leaves more in the discretion of the administration, some discretion in how they handle individual cases. You have to take into consideration the child and the other children that are, that are in a class group. And how both of them react to being pulled out of a typical town. And, and so finding a right time to do that should be left to the discretion of the administration.
I guess that's my concern in being so.
Well, we, I think we've decided we won't be so rough. Question, another question, whether we should, I mean, it does refer to that. The district may list the services of the residency officer, may require additional documents, so it kind of makes reference to a more prolonged due date process that we're requesting more information.
And I would say, I think districts that, districts that are not school choice districts, that have this issue, generally use a police officer to, to do the verifications. They may use the SRO if you have, the district has, has a school resource officer to do those. The last thing we want to see, and I think the last thing administrators want to see is principals and superintendents going and knocking on doors to see.
We know that story, right? We got that.
My other.
Wait, can you see the second page on this?
Yeah.
So we, so we do get to place, the more we put specifics in there, the more we kind of tie ourselves to a certain behavior. And even, even though we know, I'm gonna say I know, that we wouldn't immediately remove the child, like that would not be the course of action, but because it's in the policy, we may have our hands.
I guess that's why I'm concerned with so many scenarios we've explained in this, are we boxing ourselves?
Dave, do you want formal amendments to this now, or do you?
No, I think, I mean, we can do that, you can send those and we can present, re-present them at very extensive. I think what I'm interested today is getting the issue on, you know, getting to the, if you have, the substance of what you run changes more what you'd be interested in. So we've got one of them, which is to ease off on the immediate part. I had a question on the one that says, students whose parents are divorced and separated, you know, it's an exception. I'm not sure that's an exception, does it really matter? As long as one parent is there, is it really school's business if the other parent resides?
So it'll be a student who has one parent residing.
I don't know why we need to be an exception, because if somebody's.
So it could be a student must have a, a parent residing, yeah, that's.
It already says that you have to have a parent residing, so it doesn't say you have to have two parents. Next it'll say they have to be of opposite sex.
It says that, it's a gross assumption.
It says the one that has physical custody.
These are very complex issues today because of the way in which courts today deal with the custody issues. Solomon-esque decisions made by judges in family court cases leave you with little wiggle room to accept what the parent wants. So as long as, in most of these cases, as long as one parent is a resident and they want that child to go to the Carlisle Public Schools, that child's going to go to the Carlisle Public Schools.
So it could say, student with more than one household.
I, I think part of what this paragraph might be getting at is that oftentimes in divorce and separations, there are parenting agreements that describe where the student's legal residence is for purposes of school registration. And that I think what we need to say is, if such a thing exists, that that would be a factor considered or that would be weighed or.
Yeah, I guess it's okay, I think, that's a fair statement. Okay.
I think the way you might say that is, in the case of a divorced or separated parent's custody agreements shall be provided and may be.
Factors.
Factors in the decision of the superintendent.
Okay, that's good.
This still makes reference to number of nights. They include consideration.
Consideration of, but that's.
It's not a hard limit, you know, four in, three out.
Because it could change, it could change between a week.
I would guess that a good lawyer would tell you that, even that, you would probably lose.
All right, I think, any other comments on this policy for the moment? I think we've got a little bit of editing we can do and we can probably roll it out again next month and. I mean, it does speak to the difficulty of keeping to our three-year schedules and that we, I mean, the cleanest ways, we get these policies and we look at them and they're three years old and we either decide it's fine or some minor tweaking and we acknowledge that and generally, we don't vote on things in the meeting in which we discuss them, so we then have it on the vote for the following meeting. But many of these difficult policies go through months and months of, you know, things, and so we fall behind, but.
As Jim said, it's like making sausage.
But I'm not sure that, I think that burden would remain even after MASC has tuned us up, might be better policies.
And I, I don't think we ever want to step on the culture of a particular school committee or school district in that vein. So we would, you know, in examining policies like this, we would make suggestions for language changes, but leave that up to the school committee to make the decision.
Well, Mike, you've been very generous to come.
Thank you, congratulations on your return.
I'm sorry to hear that you're leaving.
We're gonna call you up before you go.
You know where to find.
Well-earned mention.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, we have another policy.
We have another policy. It doesn't stop, do you?
It's like a bag of chips, right?
There you go, candy, just one. And so.
Go ahead.
So this is the policy on evaluation of administration faculty and staff. And I think we presented it last year, faculty evaluations remain the same, administrative evaluations remain the same. But we had it changed last year to performance evaluation of our paraprofessionals and our non-contractuals. So we want to make sure that we have, that you saw a copy of that, which is attached in the packet, as well as the rubric that's used for that process. So those are, the policy really hasn't changed, we've just made sure that there's a copy of the new evaluation document included.
But we're not approving the evaluation document, it's something that policy that references.
Correct.
Whatever those documents say.
Any comments on that? Okay, very good. Next is Melinda, I think you had some ideas, and unfortunately, Mary Storrs, who is the, Mary and Christine are the Concord-Carlisle regional reps for us. And Mary, who's been on the region for a long time, has definitely ideas about this topic, but she couldn't be here to. Perhaps you don't articulate it here.
Sure, no worries. Yeah, so I was just thinking about communication between the regional school and the Carlisle School Committee. The regional school has a lot of balls in motion all the time, they meet several times, a couple of times a month, and they have several subcommittees that are meeting on an ongoing basis. And our, our school committee meets once a month and sometimes there might be instances where information transfer would be, would be good, you know, to not wait till that school committee meeting before we, you know, get some communication about things that might be relevant to or impacting, you know, us in Carlisle. Latest example, we had, you know, with the, with the warrant articles that we had, this might be a separate, actually a separate topic around the process with that, but, you know, maybe increasing communication as far as on the town level about Carlisle's process for, you know, introducing warrant articles and the financial process that we have in Carlisle and what steps we follow so that Concord is aware of, you know, how that works here and when is the right time to approach us and how to engage Carlisle and those kinds of stuff. So it's actually two, two separate topics, one is how do we sort of.
I can give you a little bit of information on both of those topics. So I did express to members of the regional school committee that it just was not really cool the way Carlisle got the whole warrant issue. I, I can't dispute the fact that the warrant was quick, but the communication around it was lacking. It came down to me putting it on City in the Woods, you know, just beforehand. And so, you know, at that point, and again, they're revolving people too. So two other members of the region and I sat down today and mapped out a communications system that would include many, many, many stakeholders, including this body as well as other stakeholders in Carlisle and Concord, because Concord wasn't pleased with the rapid meeting of those warrants in their town either. Laurie Hunter in, the superintendent, has expressed last night in that school committee meeting that she is making an effort to build relationships with, and she's already met several times with our select body. And so I think that you are absolutely right that the communications is terrible and. But, but it is, it is, I didn't, I just, I didn't like representing that as a person on the region and because I'm new, I felt like it was, flew by me too, and that's not the way this should work. This should work so that a person who's never met us can understand what's going on in the regional school committee. So I feel really good about what we've got together, there's a, a listserv that they've got that they're gonna build on and then that will also go out to like the mosquito and the Concord Journal. It'll hopefully go out to the two Yahoo groups as well as the Council on Aging, so that we're not just talking about school families, we're talking about everybody who's staying.
What's gonna go on?
Well, hopefully after every school committee meeting, which is every two weeks, there will be, they have an actual person who does this and it's on their website now, they write a school report, report. a school report, report. And so we will send that out to all, everyone who wants to be on this listserv as well as different information about how to relate to the school committee, similar to what we're doing here. And it's nice that they have that writer. So that, that person will take the highlights from each meeting and then within the next 24 hours, write that up and then that, that...
That person sits in on the RSC's?
You know, and, and they don't, which I found interesting, but, but there is a dedicated, I mean, all the meetings are recorded, so he may use that as his, his, his source of information for what he's sending out.
So then, I mean, automatically include this school committee and administration on those?
Yes, yes, exactly. So what we're gonna be working on in the next, once the superintendent approves what has, what, what this little committee has put together in terms of publicizing this listserv to get on it, then several of us are gonna reach out to different stakeholders, say, please sign up for this, on this listserv. So I, I think, again, it has to be a simple thing because they don't have a staff person to do, just like we don't have a staff person to do publicity, but this is a really good start to making sure that there are no surprises. And if there are surprises, it's only because a person didn't click here and read the agenda or read the minutes.
But the structural problem remains there. If RSC's meeting twice a month, we always end basically behind. We're gonna be in catch-up mode more than ours, right?
Yeah, but you're gonna get the information the day after.
Yeah, we, we, we get the information. I guess part of it is the activity, right? There's not much, there's not much we as a body can do if we get the information. Your meetings are the day before hours typical, the first one of them?
One of them, yeah.
And then the other one's mid-cycle?
Yeah.
So, I guess, and what's the timing for this proposed information board?
We should be reaching, reaching out to have people sign up for it within the next week.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I mean, when it's running, what's the cycle line to get the report from the meeting, like when would we, Josh?
I would say probably within 24 hours of the meeting.
So kind of what, I mean, if the two meetings are like a day apart, that's unhealthy, right? It might be more, I mean, maybe we have to take it on since we're the smaller body to adjust to our needs. In other words, to be useful, I think, for us, we would need that report probably the week prior, like a few days before, so we could figure out if that's...
Well, I think it's just emerging issues, just so we know what's going on. So if, if action is required on our part, then we would, then we would go...
We can also see it on CCTV if we need to.
I think it's just, you know, if we have a meeting the next day after your meeting, I think, you know, then that's, that's fine, that's okay. Just, the thought is that, you know, we have a meeting and then it's three weeks before, you know, or the day of your meeting and it's three weeks later. So I think that, that's a good first...
So what has he done for school committees of different sorts, but with another formal bodies, is liaison committee case, where if a committee thinks that something is of interest to another committee, will formally approve a report or commission somebody to put that statement, whatever is of interest, as a, something to communicate to the other committee. Or if there's a question of what are you doing about school calendar or anything, send that via formal channels as an output of this committee or a, that committee to this committee. Is it reasonable to adopt a similar protocol? Please give the reason.
I believe that's okay, yeah. I mean, the, our liaisons on the regional school committee can communicate public information that was discussed, you can relate that to this body and if they're...
I'm not proposing that the individuals, I'm proposing that our representatives on the committee take good notes. I'm proposing that the committee itself vote a communications letter to our committee and that we take that as one of our items on our agenda and vice versa.
We do have, we do have, do we have, we have our, our ready regional, the liaison reports?
Right, we have the member committee reports, so people...
That's different. That's an informal presentation of a member who's a member of a joint committee.
Right.
That's very different from saying, you're a body out there, we as a committee wish you to be aware that this is what we're considering, that this is what we've decided, that these are issues that may concern you, and that these are questions that we have.
And I think that, and that's what I'm saying, that those kinds of things that you're mentioning right now should be coming in a timely way to this committee. So I think it's perfectly appropriate for a liaison to communicate that. Is that...
I'm not proposing that person's doing it. I'm proposing that the committees jointly adopt the process of communication.
So that it's not person-dependent, it's committee decision?
Committee decides, we're gonna communicate this to that committee. It's not that...
Mary or myself are gonna commit...
Would you, would you do it by exception or is only if, you know, in our opinion, there's something that's worthy of communicating to the RSC?
I think Josh is mostly talking about information coming from the RSC.
There might be things that they're interested in. Perhaps a communication to them could be, please update us formally on these following issues, whenever there is discussion.
We can, we can kind of do that. Now, I guess, it sounds like the thing you're talking about, we'll at least get that, where it's not a person-dependent, right, and that is a person's doing it, but it's a committee communicate that goes out to lots of people, including us.
Yeah.
That says, here's what we covered, right?
Right.
So we should read that and we should absorb it.
Well, and I can tell you right now, if you wanna know what that this gentleman writes in Concord, it's already on the school committee website. They, we can, we can read that blurb if we choose to.
So I think the RSC liaison should do that and make sure that it is, I think, back to, I don't know, I'm setting, but I mean, I, maybe I've been sort of living in ignorant bliss here, but I've always relied on the regional reps that we have to tell us what's important to us. That's why they're there, right?
I think the hard part for that, and maybe it's just the fact that I'm new to this, is that it's hard for me to know what is relevant. I, I, I don't wanna go on and prattle on and on about two weeks worth of meetings.
No, you're, you're new and you're learning, but Mary has been on, and it's again unfortunate, she's not here to speak up, but she's been on that committee for a long time and...
She's excellent.
She, you know, and then prior to this year, Melissa was on, she's been on for a reasonable amount of time, so...
If we wanted all the information, we'd simply watch the proceedings.
Right.
The point is, how do we get distilled information that...
Or attend the meetings even, if we'd just love to go to meetings.
Yeah, so I think that we just need to have a process for what's relevant and important for this committee to know, impacts Carlisle, and what's the process for, should it's timely?
We have a process, which is the report out by the regional reps. It sounds like we get on manhattan with this report.
Well, yeah, this, this definitely won't hurt.
No, nothing, and more information doesn't hurt. I think it's also a time, speaking for myself personally, it's just a time issue, right?
Right, timing issue, yeah.
Which is why having a full report of everything that happened at the meetings is not very efficient.
Right, okay.
Right.
But so we have the judgment of the regional reps to provide us, whether it's written or it's in this member's, you know, report out time, with what that, those, the two of them feel is relevant at one end. We have the full report at the other end, right? Josh, you're proposing sort of a middle ground that puts the burden on the, say in this case, the region to formally fight for us, things that the committee thinks is relevant.
Or to back up from that, for us to request that they update us whenever, and then take the, the topics that were interested come on the, come up in their meetings, whether it be discussion or actual vote.
Okay.
Because we're not interested in everything that happens.
No, right.
No.
All right, so what to do? I think you're gonna roll out this thing and we should, you'll help us, you push us to the right place so we can read it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I guess I feel like maybe we as a, can't speak for the RSC, but I think we as a committee, maybe we need to pay more attention to what's going on down there. And that means clearer and maybe more detailed reporting by the reps to us and we need to pay attention about those things and raise our tannine a little bit.
Are the reps the only mechanism?
No, the agenda's in the ministerial, right?
Yeah, there's all that stuff we can read.
If we sent them a letter requesting an update when, for example, there was discussion of school calendar or when there was discussion of eighth grade tours of, of the high school, these are things that I think we could reasonably ask for and reasonably expect to be notified.
That, right, and I think that exists anyway, right?
No, it exists because Christine comes and tells us.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So what I'm saying is that I think, you know, it's perfectly fine for the regional representatives to communicate out to this committee more frequently just following a meeting if there's something that they deem is relevant to, to this committee. And I think, you know, that's...
I, I, I think that's so nebulous. I, 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 I mean, watch one of their meetings. These meetings are so chock-a-blockful and they're covering everything from the high school to preschool because they don't wanna have three meetings to hit the...
Do they conduct K3 courses or something?
Sometimes they have to because it's, it's all in length. It's a, it's a, it's a region, I mean...
So let's, let's...
No, that's not...
A district, a district.
No, it's not, it's two different districts.
They forget that.
I, I used the wrong word. It's a district, it's two districts. So they cover a lot of ground.
All right, so then let's put our heads together and develop that checklist of things that we would like to be able to fight up and then we can provide that and say, anything to do with this and...
So that's a good, that's a good, we can, we can...
All right, so Melinda, can you start that list? Yes, that'd be great.
We should all add to it, so...
Right, we'll...
Right, okay, good. Checklist of, checklist titles we would like to be, of rest, that's a great... Yeah, we can touch on that before we leave this topic. Cynthia, who covers RSC for the mosquito? You?
Sarah.
Sarah.
Sarah, okay.
Sarah.
You, Sarah, not you, Cynthia?
Cynthia.
You covered?
No, it was just, you know...
Mosquito. And, and, and I guess I don't pay enough attention, does it? Do they report, I guess I report twice a week.
They report the week, usually the week of the meeting.
Right, okay.
Sometimes...
There's another...
It is a very, it is a very, very long meeting. You probably remember.
But they have an extra day for the deadline.
That's why I don't generally, not sign up for the deadline compared to you.
Is there, is there any delay for ours?
Yes.
Scott Schrill, our co-chair, wrote, is there, I'm not familiar with this process at all, but is the person that writes the report viable to ask them to write two reports and one that pulls out just the Carlisle?
I can ask.
It seems like you'd have more success than that with the committee taking the time...
I'm looking at the person's judgment as to whether...
Yeah, okay, but he's right.
There might be additional, maybe there's additional hours of funding that can be applied to that.
Yes, 'cause I was just gonna say, they're, they're very interested in splitting out things that are Carlisle expenses. Yeah.
That's a good, okay, your other, your other point was more of the town-to-town model, right? I don't want to spend a lot of time...
No, I don't either. I think that, you know, it's not really necessarily this committee's part of you, but I think that, you know, when, when it comes to making, presenting warrant articles, Concord had their special town meeting already planned with 14 warrant articles. This kind of prompted us to react and plan a special town meeting and put resources for doing that. So I just...
So let me just, I would just wanna give you a little bit of history, back, a little bit of the backstory, because I don't wanna paint Concord as just acting without thinking about Carlisle. The fact is, is that there is a water issue on the property that's affecting a neighbor and the high school has been, or the district has been thinking about doing, thinking, and now the town has just said, do it. And so when we realized we had to address that issue, there was also a curb cut for the nurse's office. There was, there were a number of other things that had, that were, it was wise to put them together. And then you're also looking at parking, which is one of the issues, and so you say, okay, well, let's find out what we're allowed to do on the entire lot so that we can make educated choices instead of putting a parking lot here and then finding out that means we can't have a field house someday.
Right.
So this was all pushed because all of a sudden Concord just put a line in the sand and said, we're done with this water argument, let's get this done. So it, it was sort of, it, it was something that could have been addressed earlier, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't, and then the, the school committee realized there's a special town meeting in Carlisle, Concord, and so they, they worked toward that goal.
But I have two, it's a good explanation, but I have to take issue with two points. One is that just from, as you described it, zero attention, zero thought is given to the junior partner who pays 25% of the bill, like zero, right? I mean, if they wanna have a discussion about the change in the lunchroom, the painting in the lunchroom a different color, it's, we don't have to weigh in, even if we're 25%.
Right.
But when it comes to capital items or budget, really budgetary items, we are 25%, and there's a consistent lack of consideration given. We're small and we can't say no, we're over it, but there's no, kind of no respect. So that's one comment. The other comment is, just because you have an emergency item that needs attention and you decide to either latch on to an existing off-cycle town meeting or create a town, special town meeting, does not suddenly give license to, as I call a Christmas tree, you know, add all the ornaments.
I totally agree.
That's a process, I mean, again, we have no right to tell them how to do their business, but to do both of those things together, to go latch on and pay no attention to the junior partner, that was the part.
I disagree. It does have a right to tell them how to do their business.
I'll say it really nice.
Yeah, okay, fair enough.
That's actually his obligation, that's your job.
Right.
Which I have. I expressed that in the communications meeting today, but I think now...
Well, they got their message, because...
I will have to go back and perhaps talk to Lori Hunter about this.
Well, so this got me thinking a little bit about our internal processes and how we reacted, what our, sort of our decision tree is, or if we have any guiding, you know, principles that we follow when we're faced with this kind of decision. For example, if warrant article one just came up that said $100,000 to fix these four things that really need to be done, Carlos' portion is $25,000, would we be calling a special town meeting for, for $25,000 item? Do you know what I mean?
But that gets ahead of the process. The, the process would be talk to the budget people.
Right, so there's a process, the people need to be...
Then we can decide if we need a town meeting or somehow we talk it in.
Yeah, people, there's people...
But you start with identifying for another town, right?
Right, yes.
Welcome to the club.
So, you know, everything.
Anyway, okay, so I think it's a little bit frustrating, but it's sort of, as you say, outside of the purview of us, you've got the message.
Yes, and, and I have to say, it prompted me to push a lot harder on this communication issue because it was just wrong.
And, you know, I've asked, just, I've asked again, periodically we ask, at the selectman and town manager level, if they can...
Coordinate that.
Yeah, coordinate that, right? And, you know, it's kind of up to them to do, but I...
But also the superintendent has gone a long way to reach out to the government of Carlisle, Carlisle as well. She is beginning to, so I, I think we're in very good hands with her, yeah. And the school committee in Concord, I think it's just, you know, it's learning what didn't work.
Okay, let's move to Husky Home Learning.
So last, at the last meeting, we discussed the Husky Home Day Learning Program, which was a response to, if you recall last year, and the end of the year came around June 27. And prior to that, we heard that a lot of districts in the state, because of the snow days, were coming up with plans to adjust and make up time, and we said, well, we'll think about that, get together this summer and cover that. I proposed, so the summer, a number of faculty members, people at AFJ and Linda, some parents, Sarah and other parents got together to come up with a plan, see if we could implement something that would save us from having to make up days at the end of the year when we know that the value of those days is not equal to the value of the days we have during the year and may not even be equal to the value of what we can get done on those snow days with students home. So we got together, came up with a plan, kind of gave a presentation, a brief presentation last time, but then we got together with, again, with the parents and the teachers to finalize some of these aspects and come up with an idea of what it would look like. So we actually created a site, thanks to Tila Murphy, made it possible, and this will be accessible to all parents. And it just really gives you an overview of what the Husky Home Day learning is. It gives you a number of frequently asked questions, which will really give you your responses to what the program is about. So what the program is actually designed to do is on a day that we declare a Husky Home Day learning, parents will be made aware that that is what is taking place. Teachers and service providers will have the responsibility to go online and post an assignment for students to access. Now, if they're elementary students, they may take packets home with them in advance so they have the materials to work at home. But the idea is all teachers and service providers will be posting something online for their students by 9:00 AM. And there's varying amounts of work that students will... And there's varying amounts of work that students will have. So if you're in, if you're in pre-K through two, you may have sixty minutes work of true work that you have to get done during that time. And it goes up with the grade levels. Teachers will also be responsible for maintaining two hours of office hours. So during that time, during that day, during those school hours, they would let their students know what two hours they'll be online to provide assistance and support and feedback on those assignments. Service providers will be doing that. Parent professionals will be online also, providing those supports to the students that they work directly with. So that's the way the program would work. And then students would be expected, we're encouraging, we would hope that students would get that work done on that day so that when they come back to school the next day, that work is relevant, will help move the lesson forward in the class. But of course, we know there may be power outages, there might be extenuating circumstances. So the idea is that students would have a week to turn those assignments. We encourage them to give them the next day, but they have a week to get those assignments done. Now, we talked a lot about implementation. So I, we included a couple of different things in the packet. One was the implementation plan, at which point we talked, "Well, how would we do that this year?" So the group got together, we discussed the idea of, if we're gonna do a Husky Home Day Learning pilot, then we should... If it's approved by the committee, we should advertise it to the entire community, make sure everybody's aware of it. And then the very first snow day we have, we would implement that. And we'd put all the gears to work, make it happen. And then we'd take a two-week time period, one week for all the assignments to come in, and then another week to assess how that went. So the assessment would be with faculty and staff, with parents, with our older students. How did that work? Was that successful? Was it tragic? Did it just not work at all? We'd get the feedback. And if it was successful, and it worked, wonderful. And if it was just a couple of little things needed to be tweaked, then we'd get the committee together, make those tweaks, and then try to roll it out again. The idea would be that we would get ahead. If we had a first day, then we might go up to three days in advance of having those Husky Home Days. And then the next subsequent three snow days that would come after that would be traditional snow days. No school, no assignment. So the idea would be we'd be able to manage when the true last day of school would be. And that would hopefully be, would be looking around the Wednesday of that, that weekend in June. So that was, those are the plans. That's the hope. We have the website up. I think we shared that with the committee. There's also a site here that talks about school personnel roles and responsibilities. So it goes for everybody's responsibility. So classroom teachers, specialists. So every, if you're a student, every class that you have that day is gonna provide you with something to do. So it's not just for your, what people call the four corners, or somehow we leave specialist art, music out. All those teachers, if they have the students, they're gonna provide them with something to do at home. So that was, those are their responsibilities. Special education teachers, academic assistant teachers, they are also gonna provide material for the students to work on. Related service providers, so our occupational therapists, our speech and language pathologists, they're also gonna provide work. So here's some exercises students can work on at home to help them build the skills that working on at school, those be provided also. Guidance and adjustment counselors, some different responsibilities. So we can see that guidance and adjustment counselors, school psychologists could choose to use the time for communication via phone calls or emails with parents and staff outside agencies. They could plan for web... We also often call on these people to provide workshops for our faculty and staff so they could use that time to work on those workshops. And school psychologists will be required to provide the same two hours of posted office hours during the member's regular scheduled day. The nurse, we get into, so we have responsibilities, remember, it's a school day, it's a day. So everyone has responsibilities they're responsible for. The nurse has their responsibilities, use time for communication via phone calls, emails with parents, outside agencies, doctors. Provide, they're also providing office hours. So everyone has responsibilities. Some people, like parent professionals though, their responsibilities, they'll be available in the day, but they probably will be doing most of their work when the students come back. As we said, we're gonna give everybody the assignment. We're gonna hope everyone gets that assignment done for the next day. But the reality is, some students may need more support, some students may need more time. And that's when our parent professionals will work directly with those students, will be called on when they return to make sure that they get the work done and up to snuff and submitted so that they have their assignments done. Because it is, the whole thing is contingent upon students getting the work, doing the work, and then submitting the work. If the students don't submit the work, then the whole day never really happens. So we want to make sure that all three phases are taking place. Waiting for a snow day, I'm sweating my pants. I think that's the last one. So that would be our plan. Our plan would be if you hear the proposal, if you want to give it a shot, then you would pass the pilot and we would implement that first one. And that's why, it's really, that first implementation is so key because if it's a disaster, then we can pull the plug. If it's successful, we can move forward. You also see, I think I also included the memorandum of agreement with the CTA. So one of these, many of these documents we took from other districts, right? North Middlesex, we credit them, Westford did a great deal of work, we adopted some of theirs. Melrose, we took their memorandum of agreement, kind of tweaked it to make it fit ours. And that, you see that, it talks about personal days, sick days, and how we would deal with those pieces. But again, it's all designed as that pilot. So if we get the go-ahead, we can implement it once. And then we are gonna survey parents, students, teachers to get the feedback. We'll share that feedback with you, and then when they get the determination, I would move forward.
A few questions for you, Jim.
Absolutely.
Please do, make yourself comfortable. So first question is, do you want to automatically say first cancellation, this goes into effect? Or would you rather have the flexibility to say, "You know, half the town's evacuated for a natural gas problem? Maybe this isn't the best day to do it." Or, you know, "We're all without power. Maybe we shoot for the next time it happens." Do you want that flexibility or do you want to...
I personally like the idea, like the flexibility is given, the idea of, like, this is the day. Let's just, we're gonna give a lot of PR. So when we have that snow day, then we would go forward with that. That was the hope. That if everyone knows, parents, teachers, everybody's on board, when it actually happens, they know, "All right, let's try this. We're gonna try this out, see how it works."
Second question, what is the mechanism by which folks are holding office hours? Is there a web conference available, and people sign into and they can video confer to him?
So we're not at that point just yet. We've really discussed mostly just being on their email, so teachers access my email. This is all, this is one Google site where all teachers are gonna post to the same Google site, so all parents have to go to. It's one Google site, and they can find whichever child they have, their work there. But teachers will be going on their office hours via email.
So the other thing that you mentioned, parents are going to be doing this. I understand because kids get a snow day doesn't mean parents get a snow day. Is this work for the parents or work for the kids?
We're gonna try to minimize the amount of work that it is for the parents, but there may be some... So parents will probably get most of the information for the younger students. So they're gonna have to want and access what's taking place there. But for our middle school students, they should, if once parents tell them, and if everyone knows that the first day is the Husky Home Day, they'll know this is the day, they'll know where to go to access the information, and then they should be able to take care of it on their own. Younger students will need more support.
Have you floated this by parent groups yet so far?
We involve parents in the process. So there were parents, we put an invite out to the whole community, everybody that was interested to be involved on the committee. And we had probably about six, six parents, seven parents came in, and they gave us their feedback. So that is a concern. We do answer that in one of our frequently asked questions. Tells them that we really don't, we would not try to burden the parents, but they have their role and responsibilities in the process.
Other questions? Yes.
First of all, that site, is that live now?
This is live, yeah.
So people are reading it now even?
Well, we haven't really, it's live, but everyone doesn't have the link.
So I mean, parents are not now looking at that and assuming that that's a done...
No, some parents do because they're on the committee and they have the link.
So that's like, is the committee the oversight committee or some different committee?
I think I refer to it as the oversight committee.
And who's on that committee? You don't have to say names, but teachers, administrators...
Teachers, administrators, and parents.
So it was a joint... And to one of Josh's questions, I mean, it pretty much hinges on there being power. And I know that that's a hard thing to predict. So a storm is coming, we don't know how severe, we plan it to hold Husky Learning Day, but swatches of town on it. And what do you do for this, though?
So, so we have some contingencies for, like, because it could work both ways. Teachers could be with, even though Carlisle may have power, we may have teachers outside who don't have power. The idea is, hopefully, if no one has power, we'll go ahead with it. Everyone still has that week to get the assignments and get the assignments. So if no one has power, or if a little pocket of people don't have power, they can't access it. If they can't get their work done because they're out of power, that's why, we know extenuating circumstances will happen. But we also know there may be people who have their cell phones, not to download all the paperwork, but just to get the communication. So if they get communication at home, they can tell their kids, "This is what we're doing today." Or, "You can't access it? We'll take care of it in the next week." Same thing with teachers. Teachers have protocols. If they can, if they can't get online, but they can contact their principal, and the principal can post what they need to have posted just as if they were sick or any other extenuating circumstance, we're gonna maintain flexibility. As we always say, if anything, we're flexible. And we're gonna see how it works. And that's the most important thing. So if we have the first snow day, and we call that the Husky Day, then we have two days, two weeks to assess what took place. Now, if we have the first one, and then we have another one right after that, or three after that, until we've assessed, we're not gonna do it again. We're gonna do it once, we'll assess.
Oh, really, one day?
Just until...
Just that one time to see how it works out.
Well, but I guess that sounds a little constraining, but if you, to Josh's point, if you don't have full participation because of power or maybe you had some glitches rolling out, or people just didn't know what... What's the harm of doing a couple of them if they are close in time and then evaluating a bigger database?
But if it's not successful, we don't want to do it again.
It may be unsuccessful for a one-day trial for reasons that don't relate to its design.
And we can gather that data after, after those two weeks. And then find out, was it that the power was out everywhere? And we should really assess the power outage before we make a decision like that? Or was it just that we didn't get things posted, or was the site down? Or, once we have more information about what the glitch was, or, remember, we're not gonna assess it for two weeks because, well, the first week we're letting all the assignments come in.
Right.
In case there were extenuating circumstances. So even though students may not have that power, the next day they get the assignment, they can catch up on that.
So you're saying if it was a three-day storm as the first storm, that it'd be one of those days as a Husky Home Day?
And then we would assess that day. And if everything went smoothly, or minor tweaks, we would implement it after that two-week period.
Do we have this blessed by Desi?
So this was all the investigation we did last year. This is a, this is less local oversight. That's what Desi told us last year when we inquired, because it did seem somewhat different than Desi had put out back in September of two thousand seventeen.
By putting this very complicated bag, what they call it?
Well, it was a criteria for what they call a blizzard bag, and we have a nice Husky Home Day learning... So it is up to, it's up to the local...
Oh, well, I thank you. I would say thank you. You guys really did your homework in putting this together, and it was really well thought out. You know, the logic of this makes sense to me. You know, students to maintain that continuum of learning when students are more likely to be engaged at this time of the year than they are at June, you know, twentieth, when it's well turning hot and they're, you know, trying to figure out if they want to go to camp or come to school. So I think, you know, this is, this is gonna be really great. I have some, just a question about, it sounds like the way that it's set up, you have teachers, specialists, specialized teachers who will be all engaged with providing support for students during those office hours, making sure that they plan assignments in advance, either standalone assignments or assignments that are worked into the ongoing curriculum. My question is about the parent professionals who, during a snow day, don't, I mean, there's not typically those activities that would be involved.
Yeah, so that's why a key part of their respons, they're there, right? A key part of their responsibility is really that follow-up to the day, work with those students. So when they work individually with students, they owe students have their regular school day, but then they'll also have this work they may need to make up from Husky Home Day. So their, the expectation is they'll be working with them at that point in time, making sure that they're up to speed. We also have the opportunity to provide them with kind of videos, education. It's an opportunity for us to do some professional development with them. So if we can identify some areas that we, they could spend some of their time on that day working in that area, that would be beneficial.
So how are snow days treated right now as first, the parent professionals?
Well, it's the same for everyone. When you're on a hundred eighty, or a hundred eighty-five day contract, as our teachers are, they, it just gets put on the end of the year. So where our parent professionals are on a hundred eighty-two day contract. So our parent professionals are on a different contract. We're not on a contract at all, right? So they're, they come in for our school days and our professional development days. So if we miss a school day for a snow day in October, then they'll come in at the end of June and add it on to, just like...
Parent professionals would do that?
Yeah, that's, that's their work.
It's a regular school day that they're just tacking on.
So right now, everybody's the same.
So everybody, everybody works, if you're fully, there's different types of employees, right? We have administrative staff, we have office staff, we have our teachers who work a hundred eighty days plus five professional days. We have our parent professionals who work a hundred eighty days plus two professional days. So that's, so they have like a hundred eighty-two day a year. So for them, if they miss a day, like everyone else, if we cancel a day because of snow, then their day is at the end of the year. They still have a hundred eighty-two days.
They're paid for a certain number of days for the year, whether those are in June or January.
All right, so, but it's not a hundred eighty-five days, right? Is what you're saying?
Yeah, because teachers, we have conference days, and then we have two PD days at the beginning of the year, one P-Day day coming up in November, and then we have two conference days. And parent professionals don't come in on all those days. We do have them in the beginning of the year for a day because, you know, getting the year up and having them learn the students and all those initial pieces. And then during the year, like when we have early release days, sometimes we have professional development opportunities for them during their early release time. But on like a full professional development day, they won't be coming in. On those conference days, they don't come in.
I think it would be really great then to identify some professional development opportunities that could be done in like a distance learning type of setting that would be appropriate for parent professionals. That would be great.
Sounds good. We'll look into that and see what we can do.
Jim, how is the determination of two hours of office hours made, first question? The second part of that question is, how is that coordinated? So imagine a middle schooler who's got four subjects plus, or language plus article and so on. Did they get, at the, call all six teachers within the same two hours?
So we're not trying to over-coordinate anything, right? So first, where does the two hours come from? The two hours seem to be the general consensus of the other districts that we want, looking at their programs. So the two hours made sense because we also, just as one of our parents mentioned, our teachers are sometimes home, as parents also, so they have these other responsibilities to have. So two hours seem, seem reasonable, seem like what other people use. We put those two hours in the school day from nine o'clock to two-twenty or three o'clock, depending on what your grade level is. And then we, we just need teachers to communicate that out to students and parents. We don't want to try to over-manage everybody's different employees. And we're just gonna do it that way, and we're gonna get the feedback and see how it goes.
I, I, I think it's fantastic and, um...
We'll see.
No, but the only thing we have to make clearly clear of is that participation is an issue. That we have to have a certain number of people participate before it counts. So that has to be pretty clear too.
I think we communicate to parents that in order for us to get back credit for that day so they don't have to tack it on to the end of the year, we really wanna...
Well, I think, aren't all students expected to complete the assignment within a week?
Yes.
Yes, but there are some parents, no, but some parents don't do homework.
Make the expectation...
No, some parents don't ask their kids to do homework. So I think that participation is a major piece of this.
And in elementary school, there is no, like, they're, we were talking pre-K to two, I don't think there's homework, that came up. So they're doing the work at home, it's gonna be a new experience, not really homework, it's schoolwork, but that's a new experience. But yeah, we do need students to bring the work they did into teachers so teachers can gather the data and make sure that all of our students do it. It's different in the, in the middle school because it contributes to a grade. So as soon as you make it work, something is automatically this incentive to do it versus, it's a little different in the elementary.
I like what you said. Get the work, do the work, turn in the work. Kind of simple, right?
That's dope, yeah.
That's a simple one. Can I, I'd like to ask if any of the members of the teachers here want to make any comments, especially ones who might have been on the Oversight Committee about this and what you think of it? Yes.
We've gone over it.
Thumbs up, okay.
There's some right there.
And a process issue, I see the MOU, which I presume, if we approve it as a committee, which it's on a vote today.
Okay, not for next week?
It is on a vote, but I think it's on the agenda for today. So we're way more usual, whatever, but assuming we approve it, and I don't know, Linda, have you spent any time thinking about this? But given that we haven't finalized our contract, should this be baked into that, or should it exist on its own?
We could probably talk about that in our time of need.
What I would propose is that we have, we're having a one-year pilot of this right now. So at the end of the season, in April of this coming year, the Oversight Committee will provide feedback, and at that point, we'll know better of what will be potentially integrated into it.
Correct. So it is rare that we have a snow day for the middle of November.
Yes.
Last year, we had two days in October.
We had two in October.
There weren't snow, though, weren't things?
There was just, yeah, power, danger.
It doesn't have to be a snow day, it's a, it's a no-school day. Anyway, your point is to...
My point is, can we delay vote on this? As we're seeing the presentation now, there may be, that our constituencies may wish to contact us with their opinions and thoughts, and I, I'm not sure it's quite as pressing as if we were facing this a month from now.
No, I think that's a fair statement, and, and I personally think that's probably good, okay? Because we went to more granularity this time. It'll be recorded in the paper, and for those who have the patience to endure watching it on CCTV. So there may be some feedback. So that would be, okay, maybe. Anybody else?
I thought, we did talk about it last time. We had the presentation last time as well from the administration, and I think, I mean, I was ready to vote on it. But it's, I defer to...
I'm happy to vote on it. I think it's, there's much more they can do before we can give it a trial.
Not opposed to the plan, if you're standing there.
No, it's a good procedural comment.
But it's in November meeting, what date? 14.
But if that snow day comes until the 31st?
Well, I mean, an advantage to voting now is it gives them a chance to, now, probably roll it out to parents. Given that it is sort of a work in progress anyway. All right, it's getting late, so let's keep flipping along. I guess, do we want to do EdCo?
EdCo's brief.
Okay, let's do EdCo briefly, and then Susan will present.
So we are members of the EdCo Collaborative, and recently, they, we've had to update the articles of agreement. Mostly we're updating the dates here initially. So what, what transpired is we, probably two, three years ago, I would say before, before I sat on board, Winchester decided to remove this out from the collaborative, and at that point in time, there was conversation about the liabilities that existed within the collaborative. And while there was language that spoke to the liability that was taken on while there was a, while a town was a member, it didn't speak to the liability that existed when the member town joined. So I think that's really the, the major change. So on page 15, at the top of page 15, actually, we started at the bottom of 14, method of withdrawals. Number six says, "The school committee or charter school board that has withdrawn from the collaborative, will continue to be liable to the collaborative for its proportional share of liabilities, and any debts, claims, demands, or judgments against the collaborative incurred during said school committee or charter school board's membership, or which were the responsibility of the collaborative when the member school committee or charter school board became a member." So that's in addition. Then on page 16, this non-discrimination practices language, and that, that's the extent of it.
So is there a companion to the, so I get it, that the, the town that votes itself off is on the hook for the things that were incurred while it was still a member, even if the actual cost of that flows out of the period it hasn't been a member?
Correct.
Is there the other side where there's a bright line when a town joins as far as what it's signing up for? Or is it just, is it, or is that considered...
So when they join, they sign in, they're accepting all the liability that exists.
Do we have a balance sheet for it? Do we know what the assets and liabilities for EdCo are?
We do.
They do produce, they do produce.
We're already, we're invested, and we already hold responsibility. I can believe it, I can get this, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, it's a good point that we, what is the, first of all, this is not something required of the school committee.
It absolutely does.
Oh, it does. Awesome. What happens if some of the towns don't vote?
Then we vote, and then, so really, what it is, it's a protection for the...
Existing members.
For the existing members.
Same, if somebody else leaves, they, they own their share.
No, I, I don't, I see no reason why you wouldn't be voting, but I'm just saying procedurally. I know that we had a very convoluted vocational regional agreement that required all towns to read everything, is that, how does it work?
So yeah, we need, we need the towns to read this.
It's not on the list of things to vote?
No, we, but we're at the curve, so we just, this just went through at the last Board of Directors meeting. Which is the first. Well, I'm sure the other member towns put it on now, because they probably have similar, it's going to take us a little while to get it voted on. So if we hit vote on it in November, we will be fine.
So this formula, how detailed is the formula that calculates what our liabilities are at any given time?
I'm not sure how detailed.
Because that's really...
The formula is, I think they will address that, but it's probably, everything's based on size. It would be addressed if, see, what, it's a protection, so if EdCo were to go into...
Receiver ship.
Receiver ship, that's it. Then this would, this would kick in. But right now, EdCo was not going, we're successful, and we're...
No, but they assess it and announce. So Susan, how does it work now? You get, you get a statement, you get a bill, or do you get background?
We get a bill for membership to EdCo annually. It's in two parts. One is for professional development, and one is to be a member of the collaborative.
And if you have questions about how the calculation was done?
He's a board member.
It's based on population, and our, our assessments have been going down. Where the building has been taking place, then our assessments go down, because other aspects of the organization are profitable, so the assessments...
Okay, but in terms of proportionality, you're saying that it's proportional, it may not be linearly so, but it's proportional to the size? So we pay roughly a third of what is covered, right? And you know that?
Absolutely. Bring the documentation.
Balance sheet, all operational funds, or are there any capital assets, student liabilities?
I'm often overwhelmed, but I look at the balance sheets, I get the financial point.
Is, is there anything long-term on there, or is it all just, this is what we're spending this year?
It's long-term. We have these buildings and...
I, I sense a volunteer opportunity, Josh.
Yeah, Josh, so does it...
Be the balance sheet. I mean, seriously, because we, we kind of accept this stuff, right? But we shouldn't be looking at it, we shouldn't be looking at it.
Yeah, and which, and the formula, too. So if, you know, if a debt exists when we join, does that become part of our leave, that, that's good, or, you know, new debt occurred while we're a member? Like, what is that?
So the language, the language that they're putting in here is saying that, because it wasn't clear that you assumed the debt that previously existed before you joined, it says that you assume the debt that, that EdCo...
While you're a member.
But it doesn't say you assume that. So now they're putting that...
We decide whether the new mem, now, whether the new member has to assume prior debt.
No, but what if they choose to buy a building?
I think, right, we have to...
Well, if we're a member during that time, then, then it would be, but what they're saying is now, you would be assuming...
So if you left and they bought a building, we're liable?
Well, we're liable. If, if we, no.
No, the operation...
We're in, we're 100% vested. We're responsible for what they own before we are there, what they will be, and what we took on.
Right, but I think, let's put it this way, I, I, I'm just looking at it, but I think if they bought a building, it's a good reason. As opposed to the way Minuteman ran it, and we took objection to, the operating piece, so whoever's a member at that time votes, whether it's a good thing or not, they're, they bought the building. Now they have mortgage, or they have interest payments, whatever the capitals. But the operational piece of that for school year 1819 is our responsibility as a member. If we wrote ourselves off, I don't read it that we now have 20 years of debt service payments that we sent. It's the next town in that gets the next...
Is the board sure about that?
I, you know, we'll take a coastal day. I think that's...
That was not my read of, that we're obligated for the debts.
All right, so that's good, so let's take...
Wait, where, what's the question? If we, obviously, if we're in, we're still obligated for our debts proportionally. If we leave, we're also obligated for your debts proportionally.
Correct.
Not new debts, just debts as of the day we leave.
Correct.
If somebody else joins, as it presently stands, they are not obligated for past debts, only for future from the day of joining.
Because it's not new debt.
But with this contract, they're obligated to assume a share of past debts as well.
Correct. Don't in with their eyes wide open, okay, this is where, this is the exception.
Okay, so in the month between now and voting, you want to look in, you want to dig deeper, Josh, or you want to listen to it?
If somebody can send me the...
I'll, I'll share it.
Sharing the financial data.
You should also put in in contact with, who's the director? I don't even know.
Uh, Nadine.
Okay, because I am the agent.
Sue, do you read, read this stuff?
I know nothing about board members, superintendents, from the...
I just gather all these documents.
But we don't have to, for example, to the, make this thing more complicated than it needs to be.
Okay, let's, let's keep moving as I don't...
That would be considered a fraction of the town's debt for related purposes and others.
Right.
I don't know what the, it is.
I don't know either.
Well, why stop there? We still have LAVB. How many collaboratives do we have?
We're in Case Collaborative.
Case and EdCo.
Not Lab?
We send a child to Lab Collaborative, but we don't, we don't pay to be a member of Lab.
Well, let's start with it, because it's, so I think, I think it's a good thing to look at. I, at one point in time when I was, I dug into it, but that's several years ago, so I think it's good. Okay, let's do the budget presentation.
All right, so this is our preliminary budget presentation to the school committee. Uh, we did meet with the faculty and gave them a little overview of some of the topics we're talking about tonight. But we're going to start at the beginning with our, with our budget. And really start with the district objectives, which remain the same, providing a rich, rigorous, and relevant curriculum to our students, building a community of respect and inclusion, and a safe, healthy learning environment, and ensuring equity and excellence in learning. Now, what does this look like, and how does this feed into our budget proposal? Well, the objective one, providing a rich, rigorous, and relevant curriculum. We offer a great deal of exceptional programming, but we also know the class size is directly related to student achievement and the student's experience. And we, we're focused on keeping our elementary class size guidelines, K to 2, 18 or fewer, grades 3 to 5, 21 or fewer. In middle school, we benefit from the, the transitional model of the core courses, math, English, social studies, and science. And in fifth grade, we have the dyad model. We also offer, we continue, so we're not having any conversations about cutting programming or cutting our electives. We're fortunate that we have a strong elective program, art, music, French, Spanish, Chinese, engineering, physical education, health, library, media, code. We offer a variety of classes, and we give our students an exceptional experience. With regard to that community of respect and inclusion, we have a number of people in place that helps support that directly. Our school psychologist, we have our BCBA, and then we have a variety of school-based programs, social groups, advisory, Ovea's program, Buddy program, Challenge Success. We have the Challenge program in seventh grade. We have a variety of programs that we have in place for our students and for our faculty. So that helps to build that community, and who builds that community? The people in this room build that community, right? We, we have the supports, but we also need the faculty and staff to make that all possible. And then ensuring equity and excellence in learning. So we have a multi-tiered support service model. So tier one in class instruction modification is designed to support all the students in the class. You know, we have initiatives in tier two with in-class and out-of-class supports, and we have additional instruction. We have our math and literacy specialists working with students, working with faculty and staff. Then we have our additional instructional paraprofessional to work directly with students. Then we have tier three, right, because all our students have individual needs, and we have to make sure that everybody gets what they need so that they have access to the curriculum. Our special education services, we have students on IPs that require specialized instruction. We have students that have academic support, they get speech and language, they have occupational therapy, physical therapy, psychological and behavioral supports. So there's a, there's a variety of faculty and staff who work in support of the individualized needs of our students. And then, this is really significant this year, our out-of-district placement. So if we are unable to, to provide our students what they need here in our school, and our student would benefit from being outside an out-of-district placement, because we can't provide them with what they need to succeed and be successful, then we have to send them to an outside placement, an individual school. Last year, we budgeted for this year a significant amount. We budgeted almost $500,000 for out-of-district placements for this year. We don't have very much control of our out-of-district placements. We have great faculty and staff. We are a special education directive, works with families to see if we can meet the needs of students here. But we found last year there were quite a few students who we had not planned on, who we hadn't placed in out-of-district placements. And that been, that our out-of-district costs skyrocketed for this year. So that's going to be significant as we move forward in the budget presentation. So one of the questions, we have all these pieces in place. Last year, I was able to show a little chart that they send out from the state regarding our accountability on MCAS, and the MCAS information is shrinking, and the information that we have, I'll talk about later on, we're actually on, we have an appeal because of the way they categorize this. But it's working. So we know the supports are available to assist. All students might be struggling with social or emotional issues. We know based on surveys we did last year, that parents report that they feel their child is known as an individual here at the school. They're very pleased with the school and the teachers. Parents report that we are a student-centered environment. They're really happy and pleased with what we offer here as an educational institution. We know that the Carolina School District is ranked among the highest performing districts in the state based upon student performance on ELA, math, and science MCAS from last year, this year's data. And we are meeting or exceeding all state designated improvement targets for all of our suburbs. So the state also breaks, gets very specific with regard to children, like the categorizing the small groups, to see if there's any group that might not be getting their needs met in a certain establishment in our student school. So there might be high needs, it might be EL students, it might be special education students, but we are meeting or exceeding all of our targets with regard to all of those suburbs. So we like to feel that it is working. We like to feel that students are happy to come to school, parents are pleased with them coming here, they love the environment we have here, and our students are achieving and being successful. And that continues on at the high school. We get reports that children at the high school are also successful, as the new ones at CCHS. So this is one of those data slides we provide every year. These are our enrollment projections for next year, and the historical enrollment. So as you can see, last year, we, we started the year about 614 students. In, last year, during our process, we projected that we would have between 588 and 610 students here this year. So we were, we were right inside the projection. The projection was good. We came in at 608. It really doesn't show that over the course of last year, though, we actually, at one point in the year, were up over 625 students. So what we see is there are fluctuations in enrollments throughout the year, but we are right in that belt. And we're projecting for next year, they will have between 591 and 609 students. So that's, that projection process worked for this year, so we use the same practice for next year, and that's where we're, we're looking at. So you can see there are, we get down into like second, third, and fourth, and we're fairly consistent in each one of those grade levels, 62 to 64 students we're projecting. So now, we take those projected enrollments, and we transfer those into class sections and class sizes. I don't know if you can see the numbers here. In our preschool, we, this year, we have 14 students. Last year, we had 15. We're, we're projecting that we'll have 15 students next year. Kindergarten, kindergarten, big fluctuations. We, at one point last year, we thought we were going to have 40 students. By end of this summer, we had 57 students, so there's huge fluctuations in the K numbers. By end of this summer, we had fifty-seven students. So there's huge fluctuations in the K numbers. So we're projecting we'll have fifty-five to fifty-seven students there. First grade, we're projecting fifty-seven to fifty-nine. We're looking at four sections, class size, about sixteen students there. Second grade, we're projecting sixty-two to sixty-four students, um, and we're looking at four sections in second grade also. So those numbers are all within the guidelines that we've set for ourselves. You doing the math on that last number?
You said my comments, so you've done.
Okay. So then in the third and fourth grade, third grade, we're projecting sixty-two to sixty-four students, and we're looking at three sections there, so we'll have a class size projected at twenty-one. Same in the fourth grade, class size of twenty-one. And then in the fifth grade, you can see we're down about sixty-four to sixty-six students. That's where we had to move into the dyad model. So that's a little different there, but we're projecting, if you use the dyad, we have class size of sixteen. And then sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we have the four-section subject-based. So we're looking at class size of around nineteen, seventeen, and eighteen. Those are the projections. We're looking at carrying forward thirty-four class sections, same as we have this year. So we're not looking to increase our faculty and staff in our yard, nor are we able to decrease as we did this year from last year. Any questions? Alright, so now, this is something that's, what we're trying to convey in this is the increase that we experience in our out-of-district placements. So last year, during the budget season for this year, we budgeted four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars for out-of-district placements. You can see what happened though. Mid-year, you recall conversations here, when we went through the budget process. I remember we were asked to cut fifty thousand dollars from the budget proposal for this year. We were able to cut that because of the salary changes that took place, but we also gave a warning that we have these out-of-districts coming, that we had not calculated on. So we needed to be prepared. We also started taking action on our own side, right? We're like, we need to make some cuts and have some savings. And we had one person leave mid-year, that we didn't replace that, and then we just eliminated that fully this year. But we also started tightening up belts and weren't able to spend the money that we had because we knew we needed to save some money to move it forward for these costs. So, but the increase, so there's a forty-nine percent increase over what we had actually budgeted. The challenge is, we're able to make, we're able to pay those bills for this year based on some of the money we were able to carry forward from last year and prepay. And then the cuts we had to make this year. So we're able to get through. But when we look at next year's budget process, we're looking at an out-of-district cost of six hundred and ninety-one thousand, which is an increase over the four ninety-seven. But is actually a decrease over what we're spending this year at seven seventy-five. So when we look at the numbers and we compare special education out-of-district costs from next year to this year, it looks like we're going down. But actually, because we have in fact in the increase, we went from the budget number to the actual expenditures of this year. Is everyone fairly confused?
Yes, Dave. Let me clarify, at least remind you what this chart, it's a very important slide that people who are interested in the school budget really need to understand. If you look at the eighteen line, the actual spend compared with what was, but don't forget that the budget process requires us at around this time and flowing into maybe the beginning. Well, Christmas, maybe into the beginning of the next year, to forecast what the situation will be like a year from now and for the full, you know, twelve months of that period. So it's quite a long horizon, as we'll notice in certain few lines. So fiscal year eighteen budget, which was done in a calendar year fall of sixteen, two years ago, right, fall of sixteen. Crystal ball, half a million dollars. And you know, guess what? We spent around half a million dollars. So that came in kind of lined up. In that, the other column for those who, the circuit breaker, there's some money that comes in from the prior fiscal year to lessen the burden on the towns. And so one hundred and forty-one thousand was, came in, and so the net spend, as you see, was three seventy-seven. As Jim said, in a year ago, in the fiscal nineteen budgeting for the year we're in now, again, the budget came in around five hundred thousand dollars. Did not anticipate these move-ins that required out-of-district. What we are planning, anticipating to spend this year is the seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, which is, it's not a forty-nine percent increase against the budget. It's a forty-nine percent increase against the prior year's spending. So it's almost fifty percent more money spent. But it gets even worse because the way circuit breaker works is it's a one-year lag. It pays you, the state compensates a district for the year prior expenditures through a formula. And so while, as you're in the column above, in eighteen, one hundred and forty-one thousand came to the town because of expenditures in seventeen. Only one hundred and seventeen is coming in this year. It will only come anyway in the winter, right? So the net spend that we anticipate is six hundred and fifty-eight, which is a seventy-four percent increase above the net spend of the prior year. That is the key metric. That's almost three hundred thousand dollars more in actual cash that this district had to come up with that it didn't budget for. And that's really the challenge. So then when Jim says, what are we going to do for twenty? Again, get out the crystal ball, suggests around seven hundred thousand. So it's a little bit of a reduction because of some children that are in the eighth grade now and moving on and so forth. But, but again, as he said, all the way, it looks like it's down eleven percent. But really, as you can see, compared with, you know, roughly historical levels, it's still a much larger piece of the budget. And it becomes more and more difficult to control that, you know, eighteen months in advance of its actual expenditure. So I don't think we can overemphasize how critical this piece of it is to the whole budget process and how it affects not only the special education expenses, but all the regular education expenses. It's just, that's, you know, I know I've beaten that drum for a long time now, but I mean, this puts it, this puts it in really stark number terms.
It's actually worse than that, too. If you look at a longer, a hurt chart.
Right, yeah, right, that's right. This is just a near-term snapshot. And I mean, just editorially, the communities such as ours who are friendly to Fed. And we're a community that believes what we say and our goals. We're welcoming and we want people to come and we want people to be educated to the best that we can do. We are living the product of that because we are a town, I believe, where people like to come if they believe their children need services. And that's okay, but there's a, there's a component that, you know, we're living with. So there's not really a fix for that. I mean, there are fixes, but they're not ones that I think the town would find palatable. And so we really have, this is the kind of a new reality for us, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dave. So this is the, the bar graph we usually show, shows, so the F Y twenty twenty budget proposal, we'd be looking at eleven million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars, which is a three point eight percent increase over F Y nineteen. We also have this information, the nets of the town is eleven million, six ten, seven twenty-six, because we're actually taking twenty-five thousand that was usually provided in long-term capital. It is now being placed into the budget directly. So to the town, it's just the shift of twenty-five thousand instead of going to long-term capital becoming here, but it's still. So that would put us at a three point five, eight percent increase for next year. And here you can see in the bar graph, it just shows you the increase, and then it shows you the increase over time with the red line, the percentage increases over the past ten years. So this gives you a little budget detail. I'm not sure if you can see the numbers here. So it really gives you the actuals from two thousand and eighteen, the approved for two thousand and nineteen this year, and then the proposed for two thousand and twenty. So if we look at administration, so you can see the percent change. It's two point five, three percent. It's up from two thousand and nineteen. Then we give you the actual dollar value, which is sixteen, three sixty-eight. And then we give you the percentage of the budget, so the increase. So this will show you the different percentage increases for each line item. So that's a point one four percent increase on the total budget. Again, we have regular education. The percent change from two thousand and nineteen is one point one eight percent. That includes compensation changes, but that also includes a number of line items that remain stagnant that have not been increased. So it's not just compensation matters. Special education, you can see the increase here over two thousand and nineteen is three point eleven percent. And now you can also see for the first two compensated, point sixty-two is the total budget impact increase, and point six-six is the total budget increase in special education. Then we get to out-of-district. So it's a thirty-eight percent increase over two thousand and nineteen, and that accounts for one point six-six percent of that three point eight percent increase. So that you can see that without that increase, we're down to two point two percent. But that's, that's there. It's not, not there. Student services, similarly, we can see it's a nine point one three percent increase. Overall, for the budget impact is point sixty-eight. That includes compensation, but that also includes a new bus contract, which is really the biggest component of that. And then you can see our facilities, we're at, is that a negative number?
Yeah.
Negative forty-two, seven, and that has a negative impact on the budget there. And then we just provide this every year to give you some comparable data. It just compares us to some similar districts, Concord, Dover, Lincoln. Um, you can see what the student enrollments are. You can see what, what we get in grants compared to other districts, which isn't very much. You can also see the total in the per pupil costs. We're within average range there among that. How much to spend on administrative and instructional leadership?
We're the second from the, third from the top of the list in per pupil cost?
Per pupil cost?
Yeah, we're fourth.
Right, yeah, you could see.
Yeah, yeah, we are third.
Yeah.
So among these first five, six, yeah. So among those first six, which are K through eights, with their.
Right, Josh, we, the K through twelves are pushed over to the right because there's a difference in scale economies that work on that.
Is it, are high schools generally more expensive for you?
Apparently not.
I think it's worth less, less.
Bigger schools and, so apparently not, is what I'm learning.
You should go to high school.
I used to feel like.
Go into competition. It's so much fun around here, so.
Direct service.
Direct services to students, we're fifty-four, so we're the highest percentage in direct services to students. But that's just some information. And it's a F Y sixteen data. That's the most recent data we have.
Spent fifteen.
Spent is fifteen. The other data is?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Why does spend lag? It just takes a long time.
It's what's available on DESI.
Alright, so let's go back and see if we have any questions from the beginning. I have a few. First, I'm really worried. I'm worried we're headed over a cliff here. And I think so for a few reasons. First, as we're navigating here, we're staring straight down. We're only looking at what did we do last year? What are we doing next year? Not seeing where we've been in the trend of where we're going and what's up ahead. And I think as part of that, I'd like to see the data, but I've seen the data year after year. And the ratio of sped spend to overall spend, I feel, I'm not seeing here, is on the ascendancy. Most of these are costs that we don't control. So what we're seeing is that a larger and larger portion of our budget are costs that we don't control. Meanwhile, our overall spending is going up at unsustainable rates. We don't have a lot of growth in town. Most people in town don't want a lot of growth. What that means is we're limited in how much additional we can, we can tax people. Everybody agrees pretty much that we have a great district, great school, great product. Question is, what can we afford? And with, you know, you present percentage growth, I think a more accurate way to describe it is the C A G R, not the average percentage of growth. And I think we need to target being on a two percent rate there. And to do that, we have to both look backwards at where have each of these, not this category, but the previous chart. Where have those been over, over the past five to ten years? And then project on the basis of enrollment, on the basis of contractual obligations, on the basis of programmatic changes, where do we expect them to be in five to ten years? And sell not, this is what we want to spend next year, but this is where we think we're going as a district. This is our growth rate projection for the next five to ten years based on this analysis, and this is what we commit to. Because otherwise, we're going to incrementally get closer and closer to that cliff edge, and when the, the town can't afford it anymore. And along with that, with your showing, over, here we see overall general fund numbers. The percentage of the school spending as a function of overall town spending is on the rise. That isn't perpetually sustainable. Um, the per student costs are rising faster than the, the school budget is. As we've seen over the course of a decade, the decline in population, yet increases of, even if you're averaging the increases, far greater than the two percent we need to target. I'm worried we're headed for trouble. And I think we need to, to come up not with a plan of where we need to be next year, but a longer-term plan. Along those lines, I think there are three actions that I'd like to see. One of them, come back with recommendations to this committee, not even recommendations, options to this committee. What can we do to arrest the growth of spending? Or not for one year, but looking over the five to ten-year time train. What are the options available to us that can get, get control on that number? If we don't, it's going to sink us. I'm not going to, I'm not saying we're going to take the worst option, but at least present to us what the options are. The other is, I think we need to see not the finances of, here's last year, here's this year, and here's next year. But do a longer-term look forward and longer-term look back. Where are we, where have we been and where are we going? And related to that, you look at the middle school model, it's going to become increasingly less feasible. So we need to look at, what are the plans and when do we transition to a different model? And how do we see savings from that? Because we can't afford this anymore. I mean, can we afford it this year? Probably, but at what point can we not? At this rate, it's not going to be affordable. It's not sustainable. So those are, those are the three actions I'd like to see.
So Josh, on those actions, take maybe the easier one first. So longer-term look forward and back.
How was the second one?
I know, taking me the order of difficult, like easy. So how far back do you want to go?
I think five to ten is a reasonable number for both backwards and forwards.
But, well, so I have two comments on that. One is, on the ten-years backward look, the world's a very different place. Sped is absolutely a very different place. So I question the relevancy of going backward.
The models that we're using in this school were started more than ten years ago. When did we have a dyad?
No, that's, but that's item three. Item two, I'm just saying that the way we treated kids with needs and the way the state mandated kids with needs and what was available. And even the science about kids with needs was completely different. So I question, it'll clearly show that sped was smaller then, but like, so what? I mean, I'm not sure that that leads to conclusions about.
What to do.
What to do, right.
So if, if we see that sped jumped from twenty to thirty-five percent six, seven years ago, when there were, for example, because there were state changes in requirements. And that has been gradually creeping in the thirty-five, forty percent range, that's a very different thing from.
Fair enough, okay, fair enough. So that's the look back. On the look forward, I don't know how far out we can really go.
Well, not with actuals. I can do, yeah, project, but I mean, we're actuals. Once this contract is resolved, we'll have salary actuals. But as far as like out-of-district, it's a general rule of thumb, it's a five percent increase annually.
We, that's, we can't do five percent increase.
But that's what DESI gives the out-of-district placements. We're already getting notices of what their tuitions will be next year.
The question, let's, let's not solve it here in the meeting tonight. Just framing it. I think Josh's comments are good and they're important, but I want to be practical with what we do. So I know we can look out, in fact, your model looks out to two thousand and twenty-one.
Right.
So we can go out two years. And I guess Valentine and some of the other smart people in town have done demographic projections. We can probably kind of figure out what the school population.
I don't know how accurate those.
We used those last time when they did.
No.
You know, I don't know. I, I just don't know what's practical. We can take it on.
Well, we can talk with the town clerk and see what her.
Can I, I'd like to recognize Scott Triola. Mr. Triola, you awake?
Yes.
Okay.
He's laughing.
So you guys kind of, in FinCom, you guys take. So you guys kind of, in FinCom, you guys take a look, how far out do you, do you just say any modeling and multi-year modeling?
In terms of the population?
Anything.
Budget, any, whatever.
I mean, yeah, we, we were asking as part of the process, we used department to give out a projection and then we'll work with the finance director.
But I mean, how many years out are you requesting?
We asked for three. But I mean, it's.
Where are you comfortable in the data projection? Where, where do you see fidelity drop in your?
That's actual. I mean, it's, it's difficult because, you know, we have high confidence around things like our debt, existing debt payment schedules and we can look at some of the trends in different departments. But, you know, it's, it's really difficult to assess even school budgets. Healthcare has been an underlined and that's been increasing and we're having the same discussion about how can we mitigate these costs? You have the added variability of what warrant articles are being brought forth and what's that going to do with the budget each year? So, you know, I think what we try to do is put a target out there of what we think is our concept and what's the sustainable increase overall. And then every year you're trying to look at the trailing five or 10 years and say, where are we on that glide path? And try to make decisions at least that don't box us in down the road.
So Susan, let's, we'll take on, we'll look at, we talked to Carrie in town and she's got some models probably for, you know, certain costs, healthcare, whatever. Let's, we'll take it on, I don't know about five to 10 years, but we'll take it on. So that's the easy one, so, so far we get the easy. The, the middle one of difficulty in my opinion is the middle, or the last one rather, which is the middle school model. But I think we've already laid it out there as an objective of our committee and it's been reflected as an objective of superintendent. And I saw an article where a certain Mr. Mailer was interviewed and he also acknowledged that that's a challenge to take on. So I think it seems like that's going to result in some options.
It'd be great if we could see how that shows up in the budget in the years it's instituted. That's, that's the idea of doing a, a budget plan.
We don't yet know what those options are, so, I mean, we've recognized that it needs restructuring driven in part by the demographics that we see again in the short term, right? So, I mean, my view is we've started a process, we should look at that process.
Yes, so it's like we initiated the discipline we need to look into. We had, don't have any preconceived inclusion that was like, that's going to be the other.
We have to couple it to budget planning.
Yes, well.
They can't be totally.
Right, would you not agree that? There's a calendar that drives a FY19, 20 budget that we are working to. And then there's the longer term things, and so I would suggest there may be some impact of that. Well, it may be some impact in next year's budget, but.
So I, I'm not expecting any of these things are appreciably going to change what our, what our next year's budgets. But these are things that as a district, we need to change the way we're thinking about things to just move from one year planning to move to further.
No, no, I think it's.
To look at where our greatest budget risks are, which I see in middle school model and sped spend.
Alright, so let's go to, let's go to the, the first one, which is the toughest one. And I made a comment earlier, you know, and I'll put a finer point on it. I mean, I think, I agree with you, it needs to be tackled. And I think the administration in particular will, we have to look at what, what happens. I mean, I'll be blunt, what happens when you start saying no to certain needs or you're tougher on.
We find other ways to get the services and needs met.
It's easy to say that, but I mean, the people are here.
Well, it's easier to say that than to say no.
It's easier to say that, but I mean, this is an emotional issue with me because both of my kids are on IP's and I work with this staff all the time on that. And it's, you, you can say I'll provide the same with less resources or more with the same resources. But at the end, if you're really going to bend the curve, you have to start saying no to some things. We can't do it, we can't send this kid here or we can't provide this level of support. And that's why I said earlier, is that something, that's a town philosophical thing, that's a big, big issue. I just want us to be kind of clear headed about what we're saying and not just say words because they sound. And I'm not accusing you of saying words because they sound like it, but I know that these things can get politicized and we need to, if we're going to go on that path, we have to be very clear about where we're going with it.
So we are in many ways a district that leads the Commonwealth and the Commonwealth leads the, the country in education. On the other hand, we can hopefully learn from other districts, whether here or elsewhere, what steps other districts have taken.
Best practices, absolutely.
Controls on runaway sped spend.
I absolutely agree with that.
And I think from looking at those, we might look that some of these are not applicable to a district such as ours, towns such as ours, some are questionable whether we want to, that's at least here that things are questionable.
Yep, okay. Others, comments?
No, I think Josh is underbodden earth the hard questions.
So again, we have teachers here tonight, we don't usually have some teachers here. Do any of you wish to comment at all? Collective experience is informative to us. Alright.
Alright, okay, that's good.
There we go. So now we go to the more mundane part of the meeting, communications and correspondence. I didn't mean to say that, actually.
I'm not offended. I, I, there have been no changes to communications, only to say that we've talked about what's going to be happening to the district, the regional district. So I don't have much to comment on.
Nancy, any communication, does anybody say? Love communication, love.
Doesn't have a special offer.
Are any of you going to the November?
MASC conference.
MASC conference?
I am.
You are going, oh, good.
Thank you.
We expect it.
You need to do a slide presentation.
So just, alright, so I'll go back to, I informed you earlier, so the district has an overall classification as, from our MCAS report, as requiring assistance or intervention. So that was, that was news to us really, because our MCAS scores were strong, but we had to peel the onion back. And it was because of low participation in our by our EL, our former EL students. But actually, we had 100% participation by those students on both our math and ELA and math and science. So we had to peel it back further. And what we found out was that we had, on the access test for EL students, which all students who are ELs need to take until they, what used to be called flap out, or they fell out, it's what they call when you no longer needed. All of our students who needed to take that assessment, took that assessment, except we had three students who were miscoded and saying that they should be taking it, who didn't take it. So we have the appeal, it's been to the DSE, we gave them the numbers, we gave them all their performance here, so we're just waiting to hear back from the DSE regarding that. That was, that was the, the issue of the last, two weeks ago, a week ago.
Did you ever find out what the consequences of that is?
No, and I tell that sort of like, so.
Did they give us money now?
They give us nothing, it's just a badge, you just wear the badge. But no, they're like, that's, there is no, there's no consequences, there's no supports, there's no services. We, this is, you get this label, so that's what you wear.
We wear the pretty cabinet.
You wear the scarlet letter. Just a couple of things in the past, we had the middle school and elementary parent night since we met and those were both widely attended by parents. And as always, the faculty and staff did a great job and our principals had sessions beforehand, that was fabulous. We are in the facility director search, so thanks to Christine for stepping forward to serve on that committee. We had our first meeting of the committee yesterday and we're going to be conducting interviews. We identified six people that have been doing interviews on Monday and Tuesday next week. Lynda's also on that committee. In addition, we have Bridge Price, who's our nightly custodian, maintenance person, Kate Reed, Bill Rizzo, Steve Till, who's another member of our custodian staff, and myself are sitting on that committee for the interviews. So we did want to, we did reach out to the Municipal Facilities Committee to bring someone in to see how we might work together as we move forward.
Who's the municipal facilities rep?
Uh, Kate.
Kate Reed, yeah.
Kate Reed.
And then Bill, just like.
Oh, yeah, what about Sue?
Oh, Sue Price. You know me, Sue. They owe you another one, my apologies, and Sue. This past week, we had a power school, so we, we spoke about student information systems. Power school came in and did a presentation for our faculty and administration, staff and man parents who came in to also see and how that might interface with them. So that, we're still in communication with Aspen, which is another vendor, although they're not as user friendly or economical as Power School might be. So as we continue down that road, we're investigating the ability to bring in a new student information system. It'll meet our needs, teachers' needs and the needs of parents.
Would that, but which platform would that replace?
That would replace IPass, yeah.
Okay, so there's all these, I know I'm, I'm not focused here, but Schoology and all those other variants, that's not going to be this, right?
So it's not, so, so Schoology will interface with this student information system and there may be some redundancy, but we've had some conversations around. So no, it's really, it's a back of the house system. We're thinking of it as a back of the house system and, and also an out front of the house system. Like it will, it will allow us to have parents be able to interface more easily with their students' information, their students' records, their students' reports.
Not the pushing out of assignments and all that.
But it's, it may have a component that does that, but it probably won't be as effective as the, the park Schoology that we're using. So we, we want to use.
There's a group evaluating that?
There's no one evaluating that yet, because right now we, we're hearing what their capabilities are. But if, if we move forward with it, we're moving forward with it for the back of the house. And for the, what it will add to parents and it will help teach, it will give teachers more power than they've had before. But we're not, we're not moving it in to replace Schoology.
No, no, I, I understand that, but I mean, is there, are you comparing a few vendors offerings?
Yeah, so we compare Power School and we, we look at that, they seem to be the largest vendor, largest vendor in the state. And we're also looking at Aspen because Concord and CSGA.
My question, is there a committee that's?
Yes.
Faculty that's in that committee?
Yes, it's, it's kind of, so Nancy's the lead, Nancy and Amy are the leads, but it's open to where faculty, we're always invited, administrators.
Parents, parents are at the demonstration too.
What else, so we have outdoor education, so our sixth graders, Matt and Scott came back this afternoon.
Great day, beautiful weather.
I think Dennis up there now and I think I'm going up tomorrow night, so.
By the way, I think you should, I noted here, Jim, back in, on this slide, school-based programs, you should look after it.
You should.
Is this the first year of the extra day or was last year the first extra day?
Last year was the fun, I think.
The classroom's four days.
Have you?
They all run together on the hours.
Matt, did you have anything like that?
Benford participates in Major's Classroom as well, so it's at a different site, there's several locations.
And just some other events taking place, so this month we had the K had a visit from the Eric Olmuseum, fifth grade had a turtle presentation. Cross-country field hockey, or competing field hockey is actually home tomorrow versus Lincoln, if anyone wants to go to the hockey game. Cross-country has the big invitational meet on the 22nd. So that's it, I don't know if anyone's ever been out to the Great Prophyl for the invitational. Huge turnout, all these schools, just a great event. Spaghetti supper is coming up on October 23rd and then we have the Halloween parade will be on Halloween. And I hear one of the modells.
Oh, actually, Dennis was.
Wayway jumped in.
Well, Wayway being the cool eighth graders, like, no, I'm not going to do the parade. So I wrote, Dennis said, well, you know, if she doesn't want to do it, you know, come invite a friend. Ah, no, she's going to do it. Very smart by Dr. Sanders.
Halloween only comes once a year and then two more. And then finally, I think the, I sent my application in for the Master Planning Advisory Committee. You sent the application in? Any of you sent their applications? Any of you, no one else sent their applications?
Four, Master Plan.
The back of the number committees, I want.
Is that Peter?
In town, the Master Plan, thank you for doing that.
I didn't know, well, I was, I was taken aback because there was an application process. I thought it was just like, I'll put it on my calendar and show up and I said, you gotta click the button and apply. I followed the application.
So when is the first meeting?
Uh, I think it's the 20.
He has a meeting on the.
They have a preliminary meeting tonight and then you can also go to the preliminary meetings. I think those are like interviews where they interview you and see if you can go, I'm just kidding. Is this the one where you want the hundred people to watch the thing and go to every meeting basically?
No, I mean.
I'm not, don't quote anything, Cynthia, don't write anything. It's the Master Planning Advisory Committee.
How many are on?
The Master Plan Committee is a separate committee, but it is connected with the planning board, yeah.
But I'll represent this.
Well, Melinda's there.
We'll share, we'll keep everyone updated.
Yes.
Great.
Okay. So members, Melinda, you've got some things.
You went to the door.
Oh.
Whatever you have, is there anything you would like to talk about?
Not really, I do want to talk about the transportation section.
Not probably, okay. Not in the interest of time, however, regional, very interesting in regional.
Well, I think that what I have to say about the regional, the whole warrant issue, which has been resolved, because they've got enough money in the budget to keep it in-house. They're going through their budget proposal, I'm sitting on a budget subcommittee that's also looking at the process of the budget. They're going to zero-based budgeting, which is absolutely fascinating.
Zero-based budgeting, so explain that.
As far as I understand it, they, well, they're going through everything, every single thing.
Scott started from zero. Not 0%, I mean, start zero.
Oh, yeah, that's going to be a really interesting process.
It is, and he's the, the new business manager.
Oh my God, he's amazing.
No, it's good to see him. But he's, he's got a piece of software that he's using and so, and, and the, the way that it's been communicated and presented to the community has been very positive, so the, every person who has anything to do with creating their budget is involved and enthusiastic and so they're really aligning all their ducks so they can make much better decisions.
Is there anything we as a district can learn or adopt from this?
Well.
You seem impressed, so.
I'm very, well, it's me, I'm easily impressed. But I don't know, I don't know, Scott, do you know anything about? Like I just gave Scott the.
It suggested various times that the town knew it or parts of the town do it and it's, I mean, it can be effective, but it also requires a lot of resource.
It does.
And so we need to have the resource to do it properly.
And, and he's got an assistant business manager and now.
Well, along with Concord.
Right, and, and but now he also has a part-time person too, so there's a lot.
But it's also, it's each, each principal has to be put there to, like, they're the ones building the zero budget. It's not just the central office, everybody who controls the budget has to stop.
Is this a mandate from the region's administration or is it coming from the Congress side, like the FinCom, Congress?
I think it's probably just.
Or is it a reaction to expected?
New business manager, new superintendent.
But it's inside the school, it's not a Concord mission to go zero.
I don't think so, no.
Okay, that would be very interesting to see.
Yeah, I would too, it seems like it would really require you to evaluate.
Well, it's, it's funny though, I, I guess, maybe, I, I don't know, I, I gave Scott two copies of the preliminary 2020 budget and I can send you guys the link to it. And you, but I'm, I'm wondering if you're already there, that's my, my question, that your systems are already this.
Well, I'd like to just take a look at it.
Yeah, well, I'll send you the link, yeah.
The interesting thing with zero-based budgeting though is if you look at your costs typically sellers and people are the biggest part of the cost. And then when you layer in like healthcare and you layer in, you know, you might be really, at the end of the day, there might be 10% aside from all the responsibility to really target, so.
But do you also, I would, that's why I'm interested in the process. Under true zero base, you should really need to justify each of your personnel, right?
Yes.
We have to build an argument for everybody, Scott.
Complexity, but yeah, rewrite job descriptions, you'd start from zero. I don't know if that's what they're doing, they're not just calling it zero base and really just doing a detailed budget review, but.
Sounds like without that, all you'd do would be talking about the 10%.
Yeah, right.
Quote unquote.
That's why I wonder if it's window dressing, but you'll tell.
I don't feel like.
So far, I mean, you should have 10%.
Where did this guy come from? Is he a business manager?
Oh, but that's another.
Yeah, I forget where he was.
He's been, I think, in Groton and I want to say he's been in the North Shore. Eby, yep. Yep.
Do you know Christine?
Did he what?
Apply those principles in those districts?
I'm not really sure, I'm sorry.
It would be interesting to know, I think, we could learn from watching.
Do they have a starting framework, what they're evaluating, everything against, is some set of?
Well, that's the hard part about zero-based budgeting is that you're sort of saying, okay, these are all my expenses, let me put them in piles and see how they work. So he can look back at, and that's the, the work of it, is to find out, okay, this line item was here in this budget, and how do I?
I'm saying, oh, you know, your starting point is to create a framework and desire, you know, what you're working towards, what your overarching sort of goals are, and that, those are your guiding.
Yeah.
Principles, and you're evaluating each of the expenses in that context, so, um, do they have, like, do they do some sort of pre kind of work around discussion around that?
I think they've done a lot of it, because there's been a huge, great, positive buy-in across the whole, uh, district.
From all the constituents?
Mm-hmm, they've been, they've been, they're almost excited about the process to sort of see where they can.
But if they're like us, I mean, we start right off the top, the 80% is.
No, but that was, that was, that was Scott's point.
Yeah.
But you can do it, I think Melinda's articulated.
Yeah, but we don't have healthcare in our budget.
A way of doing it, you know, that's not that, right? I mean, we do, right, we just did it, right, we said, here's the class size projection.
Right.
Here's our guideline, so it's X number of teachers.
Right.
We didn't have to say that means, you know, so-and-so many pairs and so-and-so many specialists, we didn't say that in numbers, but the words on the slide deck.
Right.
Said, we're going to provide these services, so, you know, you do the math. So effectively, you could say we're building the argument for each staff person, but to really do, I'm curious. I mean, everybody can say they're doing zero base, and we could say that, but really, like what Melinda's articulating, no, go back to the first principles and evaluate everything you do against those. I mean, I'm just curious of what he, you're on the committee.
Uh, yeah.
Good, so very, very interesting.
Put out a checklist of things we like to know about.
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
Yeah, alright, I just sent, Nancy, I just sent you the link, if you could send it to the, I sent it to you soon.
Thank you.
Anything else, sir?
No.
Um, long-term capital requirements hasn't started up yet.
Yeah, I owe, I owe, uh, ways to tell them.
What's his name, Jerry?
Jerry.
So, so I'll get to, that's Municipal Facilities Committee, uh, which has been active, um, meeting every week or so, I missed one of the meetings. There are a bunch of things going on, one of them is money was appropriated for a architectural study, design of renovations to the police station, both to provide a secure Sally Court booking area, as well as to provide a secure perimeter and accessibility, public accessibility for restrooms and, um, a meeting room there. So.
Where?
At the police station.
Okay.
Um, there currently, there is a desire to give people from the community that brought to the library, the library is behind the secure door, so it's not.
The library of the police station.
Library of the police station.
This was what, this was discussed at the last town meeting.
Yes, so the town said, here's the money, go find an architect to do this, so now we're putting together the, go get the architect to do that.
Okay.
Um, previously, we had money that's going to turn into a pumpkin if we don't use it soon, originally designed for, the original, the original facilities, uh, study that was commissioned by the TBI Architects was for Town Hall, Police, Fire, and DPW. Omitted from that were library and school. Um, small money was appropriate at the time for library and school. We looked at the study that was done on the other four buildings and said, this isn't really what we want, we don't need the programmatic evaluation, we need more of systems review. So let's focus the next study, not on what we didn't want done in the previous one, but we do want the next one, so we're trying to get, um, library study for, uh, detailed review of systems, um, inventory of depreciating assets, so we can compensate.
So is there, but, but as far as it relates to schools, is there any money that's going to be separate in that, for school systems?
No, so a completely separate issue is that I proposed a joint meeting between the school committee and the selectmen, is that although the town bylaws call for a municipal building committee, charter to look at all the buildings in town, that is not this Municipal Facilities Committee. This Municipal Facilities Committee works under a charter from the selectmen, which of course has no jurisdiction over school buildings. That's complicated by the fact that the Long-Term Capital Requirements Committee, which does have town purview, looks to the Facilities Committee for a statement on necessity for anything facilities-related. So we have to work out, what is the role of the Facilities Committee vis-à-vis the schools, as you're probably aware, I am not the school's representative to that committee anymore. I am the selectman's appointee to that committee. The school doesn't have a.
Do we need to appoint somebody else from us, or you can serve that?
We don't get to appoint someone, is what I'm trying to say, the select.
I don't mean, maybe I'm being too, but, let's take it out of the legal context, you show up at the meetings, right?
I show up in the meetings.
So you can represent our interest at the meetings, right?
Yes, absolutely, yes, but I, I'm going to go, I'm going to go away after some amount of time, hopefully at the end, this is my last year there, probably.
Okay, but we're in the year we're in, so you're not going to, it's not like a Mike Gilbert 90-day thing, is it?
No, but there's a, there's a structural problem we have here. Municipal Facilities Committee is the facilities experts at the disposal of the Long-Term Capital Requirements Committee, but has no authority over schools.
Right, so you suggested that we leave it with the selectmen that hammer it down, so, are you taking, do I need to do it?
You, you, Jerry, and Kate need to work out a three-way meeting.
Then that's sort of action item, I can take that, okay.
Um, and related to that are, both what is the Facilities Committee, or three things, what is the Facilities Committee's role in, um, in the school?
Yep.
What is the school committee's representation on that committee? And lastly, working from the end, what is our long-term vision for the town's facilities oversight? And then working backwards in time, how do we make that happen? Where do we go from here to move in that direction?
Okay.
Um, so that's on the, on the higher, that's on the, uh, one, one of the issues. Another issue is that we've got some money for a bunch of repairs, maintenance work that need to be done in town, that we don't presently have a facilities manager to oversee. And so we're exploring using, for those things that are, don't require a building permit, using the building inspector to do the project management for those things.
If that's not a school issue, it's more.
It's an update.
It's an update.
Um, I can tell you about the DPW too, if you wanted to know.
Not really.
Okay.
No, but an issue, for example, I mean, this is an issue, because I, I, we have done a reach-out to Jerry, but I haven't followed up, which is capital projects, so we've spent a lot of time on the average project. Take one example, just for, as a question. Parking paving is a big favorite.
And Aaron Wilkins.
What?
Aaron Wilkins.
Well, see, I get to Aaron, but.
Okay, parking.
Parking's a, you know, favorite, annual favorite, and now I'm reading that the, one of the possible places to do the solar thing is the parking, which presumably if that was the one, or one of the ones.
You pay it first.
You pay it first, and they pay, not us, please pay it. So, like, where do you go with that? Does that go to long-term caps or to municipal facilities?
So if it's a request for spending money, a capital nature is going to go to long-term caps, if then there's a facilities connection to it, long-term caps is going to look for, uh, Municipal Facilities Committee to render some opinion, but since it's a school, it's unclear what the.
No, right, okay, so that's one of those, and then you mentioned air, but we have, what we have to do is get, and today happens to be in one of those more days, right, so I hope David's taking data, we, we need to get the data.
Right.
To prepare that, and I presume that again is another one, right, that's the data to decide how we're going to cool these buildings in the future. There's a third cap, is that a capital project?
Uh, phones.
Oh, yeah.
So paving.
Another town system.
Paving and phones, we're looking to tie to town. You know, are there several parking lots that need to be paved in conjunction with the school parking lot? And the town hall was talking about upgrading their phone system, and wouldn't it make sense to?
That's a perfect one to me for the Municipal Facilities Committee.
That's so, so phones is a little bit different, because that's the.
IT.
IT, uh, committee.
Well, in fact, it was Nathan Brown who.
Nathan was IT guy.
Yeah.
IT committee. I mean, think building envelope, think roofs, think windows, think systems, not.
Well, phone needs a system, but okay, but paving, right, paving's right. Okay, that's interesting, it's very late, I don't want to keep dwelling, but.
I have an action.
I have an action, okay. Was that a question or just? Do you want to volunteer? If you want to do volunteer something, since you like to. Okay, uh, let's move to warrants, please.
I didn't write them, and I had a few last-minute ones. We have payroll warrant number 1919 for $364,922.77. Accounts payable warrant, uh, number 2119 for $114,937.21. Accounts payable warrant number 2419 for $41,067.17. And payroll warrant number 2219 for $374,103.24.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
And thank you to Melinda.
Yes, thank you. Okay, and then action items to vote. First one is the CPS handbook, which we all had the homework to review online. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to, um, adopt the CPS handbook as presented. Second?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second are the CP, uh, C, S C goals, excuse me, which we read into the record, I think, last meeting, so we don't need to do that again. We'll entertain a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to, um, adopt the carroll school committee goals as written. Second?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Following that, the superintendent goals, which also were enumerated last time. On the back page of the packet. Motion?
Come on, Melinda, you're on the roll.
Feel you need another month? You can take it, but we have contributed. Maybe it was just a motion, move on these.
Well.
You don't have, well, we have to, we have to move it before we discuss it, does anyone wish to move on this?
I make a motion that we accept the superintendent goals as written.
Does anyone wish to second? I suggest we take it. If there's disagreement, I suggest we take it, but this is important, being evaluated on this. I'd rather get it right, and I don't feel like voting debate on it at 9:45.
Okay.
It will put on the agenda for next session to be discussed once again. Okay, and did we decide then we're okay with voting the home Husky learning pilot? And to take a motion for that.
I'd like to make a motion that we, um, accept the Husky Learning Pilot Program. Second?
Discussion.
I do have a question about it, um, we, we were talking about, uh, the fact that there was a difference of a few days between the contractual obligation for, um, paraprofessionals and teachers. So I'm wondering if we could end up in a situation where we have, um, we don't have any paraprofessionals the last few days of school. If we use Husky Home Learning Day, where days apply for paras who have less days, do we get to the end of school and then have used them?
So one, they're not a, so where the teacher's contract says that they're 185-day employees, we just know that our paraprofessionals are 180, that, that's what it works, like 182 days. So it's not a contract that says they only have this many days, and they can't work with them days, but that's kind of beside the point, because we're only going to have students 180 days.
Yeah.
And if we have the Husky Home Day, that counts as one of those 180 days. So even though, even though, even though the children don't walk in this door on a Husky Home Day, that still counts as one of those 180 days. So this. Yeah, it's still going to, it's always going to be 180.
Okay, so we wouldn't end up with a.
No.
And we're getting 182 days where we work out of paraprovisions?
No, we pay them for 180, they get paid on that daily basis, because they're.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of adopting the pilot?
I, well. I just want to make sure that it's, that it's clarified that it's a pilot for a certain period of time, and that there'll be an evaluation, I mean, that's setting school committee vote when it's time to adopt the actual.
Because we're adopting the pilot, so.
Well, we're adopting a pilot, my understanding of process is, good question, is the pilot is not just a single, it's a, it's an iterative process this year.
Right, so we'll collect data through April, I think April 1st is the time where.
Yeah, so, so whatever we approve now is just a pilot for this year, for this year, knowing though, that if, if after that first implementation, I feel like this didn't work, or it needs more fine-tuning, then we're not going to continue down that road.
Even if it does work, we'll reevaluate its success.
Right, so in that April timeframe, when you'll be, then you'll come back to school committee, can we identify a timeframe when you would be come back with the?
So what I will do, what, once we have the first day, then once we have that two weeks of assessing, feedback, the subsequent school committee meeting, I will bring that data with us.
So Jim, is it my, is, you might correct my understanding, that we're approving one day, you, you can't do a second day without approval, without us approving?
No, no, that's not the way.
No.
I would say, no, you're, we're approving the pilot for this year.
This academic.
And in the pilot is.
So within the pilot is that one day, and I will report back to you after that two-week period, the subsequent school committee meeting, I'll come back and share the data that we gathered, so that you are fully informed about how that first day went, and what the next steps were, and why the next steps were, and what the next steps.
So in other words, you put that sort of two-week freeze on it, just so you have a period of time for tweaking before you move to the next.
But that's inside the.
Inside the pilot, right.
But we're saying for the year, he'll do, the administration will do what they do, the committee will evaluate, not our committee, but the, whatever you call it, the oversight committee. And at the end of the year, we will look at the success of the appropriate.
The program, but also in my superintendent's updated, that subsequent, I'll give you all the data we have.
So when would be the appropriate time for us to be, you know, looking at?
April, April 1st.
Nancy, please note. Okay, uh, so the motion is open and has been seconded, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Are there business, is there any other business before this committee? And are there any citizens' comments? Thank you for not making citizens' comments.
We welcome citizens' comments.
We welcome citizens' comments.
9:50?
We do.
Anytime, we welcome citizens' comments.
Okay, very good, uh, I, am I the one who makes the motion to adjourn?
No, I, I, I'll do that. I need to adjourn to executive session with no intention of returning to open session for purposes three and seven, discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining and to comply acting authority for special law or federal grant aid requirements.
Do you need to specify which law?
Yes, uh, the minutes, it's on the.
No, the first one. What are you doing?
To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation, if an open meeting may leave detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public buyer.
And then I always have to write statements later and say, what are you really doing, did you do collective bargaining, or did you?
Collective bargaining.
Thank you.
And purpose seven is for executive session minutes from previous.
Thank you. Thanks.
Do we, no, we have to take a roll call, do we have to second it?
Second, I'll second the motion to adjourn to executive session.
Any discussion, any further discussion?
There can't be no aye.
No, no aye?
Lee.
Blotsky aye.